All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Councilman Nowakowski has a second of the motion. Councilman Williams.
I want to make a substitute motion that we change the practice of having a spoken prayer before the council meeting to a moment of silent prayer and reflection so individuals can each pray in accordance to their respective faiths and beliefs and for to be effective immediately.
All right, so the substitute motion has been to have a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Do we have a second on the substitute motion?
Second.
We have a second on the substitute motion. So the motion on the floor right now is to have at the beginning of our council meetings, instead of a traditional invocation, is to move to a moment of silent prayer and reflection. So that is a motion on the table as you provide testimony on this item. Obviously, you may support the original motion, not substitute motion. You obviously made clear you could testify, and either one is perfectly, perfectly fine. Out of respect from our colleagues representing the members of the state legislature, I think we had three of them here, and we wanted to give them the opportunity to speak first because they have important business back before the legislature. We would never, ever ask for a quid pro quo, but please consider this when you vote on state share revenue related to items. No.
If the ordinance passes.
So I think Representative Kern, or you'll be first, and then Representative Townsend, and then Representative Fincham, is that correct? Any order you guys want to go in, it's up to you. And thank you for your patience, and we have a long council meeting, hopefully a newfound respect for what we deal with here as leaders of cities. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a profound respect for what you and all members do on the city council. And if the ordinance passes the emergency clause, I'll take your recommendation into consideration when we do pass the budget. So appreciate it.
Mayor, may we let the representatives know that the motion is for the, basically, the banning of prayer. That's what the motion is.
Okay, as it stands, so our...
That's what we're voting on right now.
Okay, so we're, you will be voting on the moment of silence, abandoning prayer.
Right, that's what this is.
That will be the, that's the substitute motion, and then if that passes, that will become the practice of this council. If not, that fails, then we'll go back to the original motion, which is what Councilman Waring suggested.
Okay, so can I speak on, well, I'll speak to the, either one. Thank you. My name is Representative Anthony Kern. I represent District 20, which encompasses a lot of North Phoenix and a couple of the districts here. I have a letter from my office at the Arizona House of Representatives that is signed by 24 other members, including the Speaker of the House. And it is specifically pointing out the hard work that Mr. Sal DeCiccio, Honorable Sal DeCiccio, Honorable Bill Gates, Honorable Jim Waring, and Honorable Michael Nowakowski has done in, from what I've read in drafting some of this language on the emergency clause. And so myself and 24 other members of the Arizona State House of Representatives, I want to read this letter to you. It is an open letter concerning council meeting invocations. It says, and I would like to put this in record when I'm done, but it says, "We, the undersigned members of the Arizona State Legislature, express our personal support of Phoenix City Council members Sal DeCiccio, Bill Gates, Jim Waring, and Michael Nowakowski as they work to restore dignity, common sense, and decorum to the invocation at the City of Phoenix council meetings. We laud their efforts, we laud their efforts as they stand for the values that help found our state and our nation." And... And I just want to add to that, in my personal opinion, as a citizen of this state, this will, if we do the moment of silence, it's, in my opinion, going to spread to other cities because I think their goal is to silence prayer as opposed to doing invocations. So I would ask that, you know, the amendment to do the moment of silence be voted against, and I would ask that this emergency clause ordinance be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Take your time to come down. It's up to you. Representative Townsend, you want to go next? And then Representative Fincham, good to see you.
Fincham or Townsend?
Either one, you guys decide.
Thank you. For the record, Representative Townsend, District 16. And thank you, Mayor, and council members, for allowing us to come here and speak our minds. I wanted to talk specifically about the moment of silence and compare what you guys are doing here to what we do down at the legislature. First of all, I want to say it's kind of ironic that we call it a moment of silence. Interesting, because that's exactly what people are trying to do, is to silence those who want to give an invocation. You know, as a healthcare professional, there's a, there's mental health, there's physical health, there's emotional health, and there's also spiritual health. And I think it's important for us to remember that the body of the City of Phoenix as a whole has a spiritual health that needs to be attended to, and it ought to be represented here at the council. So I would like to propose to you an alternative to silencing people, and consider what we do at the legislature. It's very similar to your, it looks like item two, in that we take a rotational basis. The actual legislators themselves have opportunity to give the invocation. And they also have the opportunity to choose what type of invocation they want to give. And we've had Christian prayers, we've had Jewish prayers, we've had Native American prayers, and we've had atheist prayers. And there was never a riot in the State House over what prayer was given. Everyone is respectful of each other. Everyone comes up and thanks the other person when they give the prayer. So it can be done. It can be civil. And it can be done without silencing our people. So I would like to present that to you. I also would like to, just off to the side, mention that when I found out about the issue, my reaction was, I didn't come here to tell you, "You can't have that prayer." I didn't tell you, I didn't want to come to make your decision for you. But I, myself, felt the need to host a prayer outside as simultaneously. If you move forward with this and you allow this prayer, it's just a time for us to come together. And on that page, on the Facebook page, I have received notes from the folks themselves saying specifically, their goal is to silence any kind of prayer whatsoever. So we are all here. This is a very, this issue is very emotional, and you're going to have some people say some unsavory things to you. And I would just ask you to put that shield up, and don't get defensive and make your vote based off of that defense. Know that everyone's passionate, but we all still should have a voice. And please remember the spiritual health of the people and of the city. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Representative Townsend. Representative Fincham, if you have comments, please. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Mr. DeCiccio, I just really appreciate the work you're doing. And Mr. Nowakowski, Mr. Gates, I just met you, all right, maybe a couple of hours ago. It seemed like a few minutes. And I just, there's two things that I want to say. One, we take a pledge of allegiance. It's one nation under God.
Yes.
That's not out there by mistake. The other thing that I'd like, the other thing that I'd like to call our attention to is, goes back to 1774, and that's the flag that flew over George Washington's camps. He directed that that fly over every single battle unit, and it was an appeal to heaven. I would just like to leave that reminder with you. If you want to Google an appeal to heaven, you can see what the flag looks like, or you can stop by my office one day and you'll be able to see one yourselves.
Thank you for the...
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down, and I know you got back to the busy business of the legislature. Thank you for taking the time to come down and see city government at work. We have obviously a large number of cards, people wishing to provide testimony on this, on this issue. I know people mark the cards based upon the proposal by a few members of this council, so I may inaccurately represent what your, what your position is on the motion that's on hand now. The motion on hand now is a, a motion to, instead of having a invocation, have a moment of silent prayer and reflection. So just if I incorrectly state what your position is, just correct me and move on. Up to two minutes per speaker, and if someone has already made the point that you want to make eloquently, you don't have to repeat it. You can, you know, obviously, your card will reflect your support or opposition to the proposal. The first speaker will be, is it Ms. No- Noni Roser? Is that, is that correct? I hope I got the...
Noel Roser?
Ms. Noel Roser, I'm sorry. Mr. Ms. Roser, good to see you. And then we'll follow it by Deborah Smith, followed by Jackie Phillips.
I think my, well, Mayor, members of the city council, I think a little audience participation is needed. How many people actually have a dollar bill or a piece of money in their wallet or their pocket? I do believe it says, "In God we trust." And every time this dollar bill's exchanged with another person, it's spreading God. Okay? And you know what? How many of you on the city council actually attend a church or a synagogue? Raise your hands. Okay, if you're raising your hands, how would you love it if somebody came into your church and said, "Hey, I want to give a prayer to Satan"? How many of you would actually love that? I don't think any of you would. Okay? And if somebody had said in regards to the pledge of allegiance, "It is one nation under God," we cannot forget that. And I will tell you this, I will stand for God every single time. And I've got people that are ready to demonstrate if you don't stand up for God. Because if you sit there and raise your hands and say you go to church, and you allow the Satanist, which is a cult, I don't call it a religion, I call it a cult. And if you allow them to have that invocation, then you're turning your backs on the Almighty. Because our forefathers, that's who they prayed to. When they won a victory, that's who they prayed to. And when any of us actually has something good that happens in your life, do you pray to a person, or do you pray to God? We're going to pray to God. That's what we need to do, and we need to make that stand for Him.
I think very much, Mr. Roser, and I think Deborah Smith was the next speaker, followed by Jackie Phillips, followed by Monica Dennington. Ms. Smith, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton, and councilmen and women. It's good to be here. Thank you. I am a retired Lieutenant Colonel, United States Air Force.
Thank you for serving.
And it was my honor and privilege. And I took an oath to stand against enemies, foreign and domestic. And right now, our domestic enemies seem to be pretty great. And so what I want to say is, I thank you and honor each and every one of you for what you do. And the prayers that are prayed here, to me, help you to do what you need to do. Not all of us can pray the prayers we need to pray to give us what we need. And sometimes we need that input. But as leaders, we also, of our own lives and the lives of others, need to determine that those prayers are the right kind of prayers. So having prayers from satanic groups or whatever that is not part of what we want in our lives, because I would not want to see your lives being changed because of somebody speaking the wrong kind of prayers over your life. I am very careful of who speaks into my life. But it still needs to happen, and I don't think we should run from it. I think as leaders, we have the responsibility to make the right decision to continue prayer, but to discern who is going to do that prayer. And I believe that you're going to do the right things because you're the leaders over the City of Phoenix, and that's what we need.
Thank you very much. I believe Jackie Phillips was next, followed by Monica Dennington, followed by Brent Kleiman.
My name is Jackie Phillips, District 1, and I'm here to speak on the original motion and against the moment of silence. I want to speak against that moment of silence. And the gentleman, when the first meeting began, that came up and spoke that he didn't want to be offended by prayer, and he doesn't want prayer before a meeting. Well, I come to a council meeting or any other meeting, and I hear four cons and pros and things that offend me, things I like, things I don't like. That's life. I mean, to silence prayer is against our founding fathers, who were faithful to God, and this nation would never have risen without God in the prayer. And people surrendering to God and getting wisdom from God. So the silence is an attempt to silence God, and silence prayer, and silence the voice. And I'm against that, and I'm for the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Monica Dennington, followed by Brent Kleiman, followed by Wes Harris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to say thank you to Representative Townsend, who so, so beautifully articulated our need to speak. And that is what this great nation is about, not silencing different ideas. And as, as the representative said, even atheists have given prayers in, in their gatherings, and nobody has had to have, be offended or have a riot. So that's really not the issue. What I want to bring up today is the fact that the Satanic Temple, which is obviously the subject of this, brings out the need for this council to be able to use discretion in who is giving the invocation. And they illustrate it very, very well, because they are a hate group, and specifically, they are a misogynist group. If you look on the Facebook pages of Michelle Short and Stu DeHaan, which are the representatives that would like to pray over this council on February 17th, you will see images of Michelle Short in bondage, in nudity, in all kinds of positions that are not appropriate and that are degrading to another minority group, which is women and girls. We cannot stand by while a hate group who promotes violence against women stands up and gives your invocation. That is standing against the God of nature, which our forefathers pointed to. You know, in their wisdom, they knew that we would have varying ideas of who that God is, but we have a common morality. We have a common sense of what is decent. The founder of, or the national spokesperson for the Satanic Temple recently had arrest warrants issued from Meridian, Mississippi, because he and the Satanic Temple did a desecration of the, of the gravesite of Fred Phelps' mother. He got the idea from Westboro Baptist. So following in the footsteps of hate, they decided to take revenge by desecrating that gravesite. One of the actions that was taken is that this leader, who is threatening to sue the city, he, he laid his genitalia on, on the gravesite, and that, on the gravestone. Now, these are the people that are wanting to pray.
We've gone well over two minutes, so I apologize.
So all I want to say is, thank you for having a common sense of decency, for standing up for that, and understanding that when you stand against hate groups, when you stand against groups that promote violence against women and girls, you are standing for the God of nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. A couple of us would like to ask...
Monica, if you can stay up for a second.
Do you have a question? Please, go ahead.
Just so, I want to make sure that you understand what's the motion on the table and what you're going to be told, okay? Which, I'm going to foreshadow this, because this is what I do here. I mean, I expected this to occur last week, when I was predicting that the City of Phoenix was going to move toward banning of all prayer. That's what, that's what this discussion is. This is what that Satanist group wants. When you read that, their bio in there, their main goal was to do what?
Their main goal is to silence any expression, any religious expression in public life. And they do that by creating an impossible choice, which is that we either cannot express ourselves and our spirituality and share those ideas with one another in public, or we have to accept the most extreme blasphemous and obscene, according to Arizona law, obscene expressions right next to all of our expressions of faith.
So just to be clear, though, too, from your reading of that, and I appreciate the fact that you actually read it, because I don't know how many people do. When they read that, they will get the same impression that you got out of this, out of that satanic group. And I do agree with you that it is a cult. It's not a real religion. It just isn't. But their main goal, and I want to drive this home, is to silence the other side. And that's done through a moment of prayer, or it's done through a banning. Basically, a moment of prayer, silence, a moment of silence is basically a banning of prayer.
Yes, and so I'm not for the current motion that, for the, for the moment of silence. I'm for yours.
I just want to make sure people understand that that's what this discussion is to, it's to agree to the satanic goal to ban prayer.
Exactly. And to silence women, and to promote violence against women. By the way, Michelle Short, who would be presiding, she has a picture on her website of herself beheading another woman. It's bloody, there are gashes, and in light of the current situation with ISIS and everything else, it's not only distasteful and violent, it's, it's considered to be by a woman like me to be terrorism.
Mayor. Councilman Nowakowski has a question.
You said that this was a hate group, and you gave some examples. Do you have any other examples?
Yes, I do. There is a podcast with Lucy and Grease is the pseudonym of the national spokesman. His real name is Doug Messner, or one of them, Doug Messner. In that, I have it here, among other things, he uses racial slurs. He uses slurs against Jews. He uses slurs against gays. And he talks about various ways that are horribly lewd and obscene to use whores. The host in that podcast is talking about a rape book, which he's put together, which is not anything that's, it's, it is as offensive as it sounds. And he's laughing also, along with the host, as they start out the podcast by saying, "On 9/11, we would like everyone to know that we're praying for the victims of 9/11." And then they laugh in mockery. And then they say, "We don't care about 9/11. We couldn't care less how many buildings burn. We don't care how many people die." And then Doug Messner pipes up and says, "As long as it's a lot."
Any additional questions, Councilman Nowakowski? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
One last one, too, just so that you know and you see how this thing is going to be set. You're going to be told that if we ban prayer here at the City of Phoenix, this issue will go away. Well, of course it will, because that's what the Satanists want, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Brent Kleiman, followed by Wes Harris, followed by Moses Sanchez. Mr. Kleiman, good to see you again.
It's good to be in front of you again, Mr. Mayor, city council members. This is difficult for me. I've come to quite a few city council meetings, and I'm here in time for the invocation. Being Jewish, there are very few times that I actually get to hear a man of my faith or a woman of my faith get up and give the invocation. I stand quietly, and I allow it to happen. I don't dispute other religions, other faiths, from their opportunity to do this. I believe the government, the city council, the City of Phoenix has that necessity to allow people who apply to give this invocation to give the invocation. We can't allow the members of the city council and mayor to pick and choose who they want to give the invocation and only invite those people. It has to be open. I don't agree with the moment of silence that Councilwoman Williams proposed. I believe the prayer is the right thing to do. I believe part of your motion is correct, Councilman DeCiccio. It should be only residents of Phoenix. That is important. The people who represent the City of Phoenix are the people who should get up here and speak and pray to the members of Phoenix. Not people from Tucson, not people from California, not people from anywhere else. I think it is very important that, as frugal conservatives that some of these board members are, that you look and see that if we do go to picking and choosing or making this where prayer stays, but these, this one group cannot go, the U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that's unconstitutional. We will lose. And depending on how far the city council decides to take it, it will be money spent that we will never get back. You talk about the hotel money, gone. Do you want to spend millions of dollars fighting something? You all know, and every lawyer has told you, you will lose at some point, and we have to walk away. So let's be prudent here. Let's understand there are things you can do as a city council. You can require the people to be from Phoenix. That's fair. You can't pick and choose what religions or what faiths you believe are appropriate to come up here and give the invocation at the beginning of city council meetings. So take this apart, deny the motion with silence, and modify your motion to just say "Phoenix residents." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kleiman. Wes Harris is next, followed by Moses Sanchez, followed by Diane Barker. Mr. Harris, good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Wes Harris. I reside on Coral Gables for 45 years, and I've been trying to get it repaved. I see it is not on the list. Again, I'd like to invoke the words of John Adams. Our Constitution is for moral and religious people. It is totally unfit for any other. We are not any other. This council is not any other. The City of Phoenix is not any other. We are, I am a Christian. We have Christians in this, which is the majority. We have Jews. We have Muslims. We have all sorts of things. And we have invocations, much like the one that was given this morning, or this afternoon, which was outstanding. It was motivating. It was excelling in the spirit that it was offered. And I think it gave us all a tool with which we can move forward. I've known Councilman Williams for almost as long as I haven't. And I'm really surprised that you would offer such a resolution to a moment of silence. I go to City Phoenix School Boards, and they have a moment of silence. I've timed them. They're 15 seconds at the most, 20, maybe. Never a moment, and never about God. And this country was founded on the principles of Judeo-Christian principles. We've been practicing Christianity and Judeo-Christianity here for 400 years, longer than this nation was a nation. And all of the founding fathers prayed to God. Even Benjamin Franklin, who's been called a deist, was really a Christian. And in fact, when there was an impasse in the Constitutional Convention, he got everybody out and marched them down the street. He was carried because he had kidney stones. And he took them to a church, and they prayed. And when they came back, they basically passed the Constitution that we have pledged to defend. This is one nation under God, and for us to be pushed into a corner is beyond the pale. We are not going to practice our religion behind our closed doors and behind the churches. We're going to practice it right here at city council, and I hope to heck that you vote in favor of the original proposal and against the silence.
I think very much, Mr. Harris. Moses Sanchez, followed by Diane Barker, followed by Pastor Escobar.
I think I'm next, right?
Was it? I think it was Mr. Sanchez first, then Ms. Barker, but if you work out a side deal, that's fine.
Oh, that's good. Gracias.
Before we start, Mayor, Moses is on the school board, Tempe School Board. Thank you for your service. He's a veteran, an amazing, an amazing American. I want for everybody to know who this individual is. He's a rising star. Thank you, Moses.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor DeCiccio. Buenas tardes, acá de Stanton y Consejo Municipal de Phoenix. Me, I'm going to repeat it in English, okay? Thank you. Mi nombre es Luis Sanchez, y yo vivo aquí mismo en Phoenix, en la comunidad de Awatuki. Vine hoy a pedirle que apoyan la clausa de emergencia que van a votar en Noe. Es una lástima que estamos aquí pasando esto mismo cosa en nuestra ciudad. Esto no es bueno para nuestra comunidad. No es bueno para la escuela, no es bueno para los estudiantes, no es bueno para la economía de la ciudad, no es bueno para el estado. Tenemos suficiente cosa mala pasando. Esto nosotros no necesitamos. Esto no es bueno para ninguna persona aquí, y es importante que nosotros apoyan esa clausa de la comunidad para que todos saben quién está tomando estas decisiones. As I said before, my name is Moses Sanchez. I'm a resident of Phoenix. I live in Awatuki. And I'm here in support of the emergency clause, not the moment of silence, that you guys plan on voting on. I'm a little bit embarrassed that we're here and that we're getting this much negative attention without real transparency. We've actually had a lot of negative things happen in the state of Arizona recently, and I just want to take a timeout, take a break from all of that, including this. This isn't good for our city. This isn't good for our schools, our state, and our economy. And I ask that you vote in favor of the emergency clause in order to have real transparency. Thank you very much, and may the Lord bless you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez, Diane Barker, Pastor Escobar, and then KM Lude, Lude, I hope, Ms. Barker.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, Diane Barker. And I did apologize to Mr. Sanchez for trying to take his place, because I do believe in order, and he was before me. And I believe in law, too. And on that, I've read what our attorney, city attorney, has said, and he's studied the Supreme Court case. This isn't the first time. This has come before city councils. A lot of the people here may think it is. It's been very discussed around the United States. And a woman who was Jewish made a case into the Supreme Court because her religion wasn't being heard. When we see the spread of religion in what we call the new order, the new area of the world, it's a northern, North America and South America, and it's basically Christian. And so you'll find... And so you'll find the invocations basically across the United States are Christian religions. And she wasn't being heard on hers. But the Supreme Court, interestingly enough, most of the justices are Catholic. And so they says, "Okay, well, we're not going to get rid of it, but, because it's tradition, so we'll keep it." However, I think that what's come out of it is you can't be selective. And that's what I'm saying, is what's happening, if you are going to personally pick and choose, and you, the legislature even here, if you notice, she said that works real well, they all pick. You know, I never ever, she never ever said Muslim religion. And it's because either there's, and I'm not saying she was, but we have a lot of hate for that particular one. The thing is, is that people may carry subconscious feelings about things that they don't know about, and they don't understand. So a fear makes them dislike something they don't have. Let's not get into that. And finally, I'd like to say Brett Kleiman, the attorney here, he spoke what I believe in. You need the modified. And I just, just realized Brett Kleiman's a Buckeye. I agree with him. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Barker, Pastor Escobar, followed by K.M. Leod, I hope, and then Larry Fraley.
Thank you, mayors, thank you, council. Four months ago, 1,400 Hispanics, millennials, we came and prayed right outside City Hall. And we prayed for the city, we prayed for the council, and for the mayor, for your family, for your safety. And I just want to be sure today, I just want to say, please, prayer is good for our city. Prayer is good for our families. Prayer is good for our community. Please do not deny us the right to come and pray and bless you here inside the City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is it K.M. Leod? Leod? I'm sure I'm mispronouncing it. How about Larry Fraley, followed by Beth Holgren? Good to see you.
Mayor Stanton, council members. First of all, I want to say that I'm happy to hear the mayor praise, as he mentioned earlier that he was praying for the people to use the resources of the city. I heard he say that. My name is Larry Fraley, and I'm one of the founding members and pastors at Christchurch Valley here in town since 1982. And for many years, our church was a cross-section of residents in the Northwest Valley, District 1, that Councilwoman Williams was elected. Unfortunately, that is, or fortunately, that is no longer the case. We now have six campuses, and we have over 40,000 of our members who call Christchurch of the Valley our home. But our church is large, but it's only a sliver of the hundreds of churches that are represented here in the Phoenix area. I'm not here today actually to fight for keeping the Sataness out of praying at the council meeting on the 17th. I have something much higher than that. I have my own personal beliefs about that, but I believe that we have elected you to the office because we felt you represent a cross-section of our communities, and therefore we trust your decision. Your job is a difficult one, as you try to be fair. But you're all leaders, and I ask you to lead and not cower when decisions get tough. I strongly urge you to lead, that you, the council members, or the mayor, who believe in a Creator, would choose who would come and give an invocation or prayer. So I support the idea of rotating responsibilities to choose the invocation and prayer and who that would be, and that you will represent who you think will serve our community and represent our community the best. If you truly believe that bringing a satanic prayer group into this body of council, then so be it. But I urge you not to cower on making an easy decision by choosing a moment of prayer and shows total disrespect to our Creator. I hold those who will support this moment of prayer and direct responsible for removing the practice that has long endured. Praying during council meetings and other legislative gatherings is a part of our heritage and our tradition, part of expressing who we are to similar things like Pledge of Allegiance and inaugural prayers, and the recitation of God Save the United States in this honorable court, which happens in certain courts. I beg you, do not ban prayer. I understand that many of you, or several of you, may be afraid of a lawsuit. I say, do the right thing. I strongly suspect you've dealt with lawsuits before. You can deal with them again. Don't sell your soul on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kleiman. Next is Beth Holgren, followed by Joe Garcia, followed by Blue, which I assume is Blue Crawley. Ms. Holgren.
Hello, my name is Beth Holgren, and I'm from Apache Junction, Arizona. But I know that our capital city of Phoenix is very important to all of us in the state of Arizona. So as go you, so as go we. That is one reason why I am here today. Our nation was founded on Judeo-Christian values and prayers. Our Supreme Court building, you cannot walk within its walls without almost feeling you're in a church and on holy ground. This nation has been a holy nation. Yes, we embrace everyone, but we cannot forget our heritage. And in banning prayer or a moment of silence, as Mr. Harris stated, you know, it comes to a 15-second, "Okay, we're done." We must continue to honor the Creator of this nation and of this world, because if we abandon Him, He will abandon us.
All right, thank you.
We have seen our schools decline and the violence rise. Could that perhaps, and that is a rhetorical question on my part, could that perhaps be because we have stopped teaching our children that prayer in public places to honor the entity that has been honored in this nation, that has made us a strong people? We must continue that if we are going to continue to be a strong cities and states and a strong nation. It is under God. And I realize that that was added on, that it was added on for a purpose. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holgren. Joe Garcia, Joe Garcia is next.
If I may to confirm, I am against the moment of silence. I am for Mr. Waring's.
We inferred that. Thank you very much for your testimony. Joe Garcia is next, followed by Blue Crawley, followed by Jose Baca Jr. Mr. Garcia, good to see you.
Thank you very much, councilmen, and everyone on the bench. I just want to say that we need prayer. The day that we ban prayer is the day we walk away from God. And I want to also remind each and every one of you behind the counter, what you say yes to, you will answer to God. What you bring into our city, you will answer to God. So therefore, we need to understand, as we exalt the name of Jesus Christ, I am a pastor of Christian Life Church, and I represent Jesus Christ. And I just want to let everyone know here in this, in this room, in this auditorium, when they took prayer out of schools, our schools, as we already heard, began to have problems. Then we take the Ten Commandments out, and so many other things that we have allowed in our states, in our nation, we say we are under God. But yet man has taken authority onto themselves. And we need to understand that everything that we say yes to, we will answer to God. And we need to realize that one day we will be in judgment day. God is asking us to stand up for what we believe. And if we believe in Jesus Christ, we must stand up to the name of Jesus Christ. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Blue Crawley, followed by Jose Baca Jr., followed by Darlene Vasquez. And I'm going to hold it a little tighter than two minutes, because we have a lot of people who want to speak, and we want to make sure we're respectful of everybody's time, so I'll be a little tighter on the time.
You want to say, you want to say my last name again? Crowley? My brother was a Magus in the Temple of the Golden Dawn, which is a religion that is based on the teachings of Aleister Crowley. You can look it up. And when I hear all these people talking and they say, "Under God," well, which God are you talking about? I heard that gentleman just say, "Jesus Christ." So if you're a Jew, is it not your God? Or is it a Muslim? Or are we just going with the religions of Abraham? Well, in my neighborhood, I've got Sikhs. I've got friends that are Druids. So, Mr. DeCecio, is it that your district is only Christian? Because the way you're putting it out, you're saying, "Why would any of our council members have anybody here other than a Christian?" I have a problem with that, because when I look at the Christian religions, I wonder which ones are occults and which ones are pagan, because they point at each other. And this country may have been Judeo-Christian, but this state was Catholic. So when I hear some of the Protestants point to the Catholics and say, "We're not," or "they're not," or whatever, I find it that what you did, Thelma, was Solomon-like, because either you have everybody, or you have nobody. And when it comes to praying, all of you do it out loud, don't you? All the time, it's out loud, because that's the most sincere way you do it.
Mr. Crawley, please, please.
When you're meditating and you're talking to God. I know, I'm just saying that when people are praying, the most intense prayers are done what? Vocally, so everybody hears you and can appreciate that you're a Christian? Or is it when you're meditating and you're talking to God one-on-one? So when I hear that meditation and a moment of silence isn't up to the standard of prayer that others want, well, let's go back one more step.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crawley, appreciate your time.
Thirty seconds, and all I'm going to say is that you are not to endorse or condemn any religion, and when you're doing what you're doing, it's that way.
All right, thank you. Jose Baca Jr. We just got to keep it to two minutes, we have a lot of speakers. Followed by Jose Baca Jr., Mr. Baca Jr. here? There he is. Okay, come on down. Followed by Darlene Vasquez, followed by Jose Gonzalez. Darlene, you want to go first? You're up, sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmen. An honor to be here. My name is Darlene Vasquez, and I'm a Native American from the Hilo River Indian Community, but I reside here in Phoenix. I'm a pastor on the Hilo River Conservation, and I am so concerned about what's going on. And I praise God that, you know, we, we have. It saddens me to hear what's going on. I'm a Christian. I believe in the one true God, God the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And I, I'm not for the silent prayer. I want Christians to pray. I want those that believe in God, the one true God, to pray, and it will bring blessings to everyone. The Bible says, "And my people will humble themselves and pray, and seek My face, and turn from their wicked ways. Then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin, and will heal their land." We need healing in our land. We need healing. We've been praying for healing. My people have been praying for healing. There are too many curses on our land, and we don't need another curse to come upon our land. It breaks my heart to hear what's going on. The word of God came through you to our people, and we were set free.
Thank you very much, Reverend Vasquez.
I believe, I believe in God.
Thank you very much.
Can I just?
Man, we have, I've got to go over two minutes, but we've got a lot of people to provide testimony, so I'm trying to limit it to two minutes. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for your testimony, it's very powerful. Jose Baca Jr. is next, followed by Jose Gonzalez, followed by Reverend Eve Nunez. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton. Thank you, city council. A word can bring life. A word can bring death. A word can bring hope when you feel there's none left. A word can bring peace. A word can bring pain. A word can make you think, or it can drive you insane. A word can bring strength and faith to overcome, or it can leave you speechless, belittled, and numb. A word can bring grace and leave a smile on your face, or it can leave your jaw flat on the floor while it leaves your heart broken, bleeding, and sore. So remember, each time before you speak, your words, they carry weight. So may your hearts be filled with love to dissipate all the hate. It has been said that in the absence of light, darkness prevails. In the absence of truth, AKA silence, lies will prevail. Do not silence prayer. We are one nation under God, believe it or not, like it or not. And when we silence prayer, we're calling on behalf of Him. If we silence prayer, it says we don't need Him. Remember, you're held accountable to Him. You all raised your hand. You're held accountable. Foretold is forewarned. You don't want the ramifications of silencing prayer in this great city. Do not silence prayer.
Thank you very much, thank you for your testimony. Next is Jose Gonzalez, followed by Reverend Eve Nunez.
I'm Pastor Jose Gonzalez. I'm going to speak just a little bit about freedom of religion, but from the viewpoint of our founding fathers. When you read the history of the United States, when you read about Abraham Lincoln or George Washington and our founding fathers, you clearly see that what they meant by saying "religion" is a group of people believing in God Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, not any other kind of another group. When you see clearly in the history of the United States, or in the Constitution saying "freedom of religion," and you clearly see that they did believe in the God of the Bible, in God Almighty, then what they meant is this: a group of people believing in God Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth, and in the Bible as the word of God. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Gonzalez. Reverend Nunez, good to see you, followed by Joanne Scott Woods, followed by Antonio Vasquez.
Hello, council and mayor, thank you for this opportunity. And I love what our state constitution says, that we, the people of the state of Arizona, are grateful to the almighty God for this, our liberties and do ordain this constitution. So our state constitution, thanks God. I'm going to read this from a dear friend that's here in the audience. It's "Bridge Builders," that represents thousands of ministers throughout the state. And it's an invocation, is according to the Oxford Dictionary, this was written by Helfsacks, "The summing of a deity or the supernatural, the action of invoking something or someone for assistance. Traditionally or historically, an invocation has been the opening prayer of a meeting or assembly, calling upon almighty God to give wisdom, guidance, and for decisions to be divinely inspired. Why would we want to invite anything or anyone less than almighty God, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, to guide our city, especially an entity that opposes God and His goodness in every way? I believe a Satan worshiper would just bring curses, and I believe..." and I believe that we need to continue to support the amendment that Sal DeCiccio did. And I oppose the silence and the prayer. I believe that we need to continue to pray. I have been a minister for over thirty years here in the city of Phoenix. I have three children that were born in the city of Phoenix. I live in the city of Phoenix and have had many children from the city of Phoenix that have lived in my home and have been praying for the city of Phoenix since, actually, since 1974. And this is a word. I want to read something that I have prayed over the city since 1974. It's actually in a book written by my good friend Deb Welch. It's called Unlocking Arizona's Prophetic Destiny. "The righteous cry, 'In the last day,' says the Lord, and He spoke this to me in 1974. And I pray this over our city. I make a declaration that I will visit your city of Phoenix. A baptism of fire will baptize both young and old. It will start like a spark and spread like wildfire throughout the state of Arizona. The eyes of the Lord are upon the righteous in this city of Phoenix, and my ears are open to their cries. It will be called as a godly city all over the world. I will pour my glory upon the inhabitants of the city and surrounding cities and purify you with fire. It will be called the city of the S-O-N, not the S-U-N. The righteous cry, the Lord heareth, and I will deliver them out of all their trouble. The Lord is near to them that have a broken heart and a contrite spirit. Many are the afflictions of the righteous in this city of Phoenix, says the Lord, but I will deliver them out of them all." Thank you so much for your time. God bless you.
All right, Joanne Scott Woods is next, followed by Antonio Vasquez, followed by Reverend Montoya.
Religion has been a topic of divisiveness for millennia. Our council members' positions on 43.1 reflect that. I recommend the elimination of the invocation from the agenda.
Student Council, or I'm sorry, City Council. I didn't get to give my speech when I was in school. My name is Burke Montoya. I've been the pastor of Way of Life Church in South Phoenix for the last ten years. The church was established in 1975. So we've been here in the valley for about forty years. I've personally been a citizen of Phoenix for a total of sixteen years. And I'd like to bring a perspective to you this afternoon as to those who are being allowed to invoke the name of their God upon our city, using perhaps my church as an example. And I'd really like you to hear this, perhaps the suggestion on how we can allow people to pray over our city. We feed an average of about a hundred families every week as an agency of St. Mary's Food Bank. We have people who are struggling with alcohol, drugs, and poverty walking into our church weekly. It's a privilege of what we do because we want to better our city. This afternoon, we have an after-school program of kids that are coming into the church as a part of Young Life. We visit the senior citizens that are shut-ins in different various parts of the city. Every Saturday, we have a team of people that actually go into the jails, and they give up their entire Saturdays to visit those that are in prison. What I'm talking, why I'm talking about these things is this: If we were given the privilege, and if I was given the privilege to invoke the name of my God upon this city, it would be a privilege not to impose my religion, not to, for my name's sake, or for my church's name's sake, or my denominational affiliation, but for the betterment of my city. You see, why can't we use this criteria when we are asking people to invoke the name of their God over our city? Rather than allowing every religious group to come and invoke their God upon our city, all in the name of religious equality, why can't we vet these religious groups to determine if they're already investing in the betterment of our city? Why should I even as a Christian man come before you and want to pray to my God if I'm doing nothing to better my city? And if these particular religions that want to come in representing their God, I think they should be vetted and determined whether they're helping our city or not, as each of the city council members are doing. That you have been vetted, you have been voted into your positions because you want the betterment of our city. People that are being given the privilege to pray over our city, they should have an investment. They should be from our city, and they should be given that privilege only because they have proven themselves to have the betterment of our city in mind. Not to invoke their God because of religious equality, but because we want to bless this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Antonio Velasquez, followed by Cindy Petrovich. We have Mr. Velasquez. Cindy Petrovich?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, for letting me speak today. My name is Cindy Petrovich, and I have lived and played, attended church and school, married, had three children in Arizona since 1952. My husband, who is a native of Arizona, and I have been business people most of our fifty years of marriage. I am also the founder and president of an Arizona ministry called Freedom for Life Ministries International. And I have spent hundreds, even thousands of hours, ministering to people that have been damaged by Satanist and the effects of Satan across the board. A motto is a phrase meant to formally describe the general motivation and intention of an organization. The motto for our nation is "In God We Trust." And in keeping with that, our forefathers gave Arizona the motto "God and Riches." Our forefathers knew who had and would continue to enrich and bless this beautiful state, and He has certainly been faithful to our trust. The strength of our state is being challenged today by the request to call upon a different God from the one who has blessed and protected from the beginning. I am entreating you, as the city council of our capital, to stand firm in protecting this city and state by calling upon the name of our God out loud and not opening a door to another strange God through invocation. We stand as, you stand as servants and representatives of God and servants and representative for the people. I encourage you to stand firm to that pledge of love and honor by disallowing this dangerous invocation from the members of the satanic organization.
Thank you, Ms. Petrovich.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dennis Lurbe, followed by Kurt Mangum and Leonard Clark. Mr. Lurbe?
My name is Dennis Lurbe. I'm a veteran, Air Force veteran, Vietnam era. I was disabled in combat in Vietnam, December 1969, in a way that you can't see physically. I was raised in a Baptist home, very strict Baptist home. And over the last fifteen or twenty years, after much study, I have been reading the Bible and so forth, I have decided that I no longer want to practice a religion. You seem to think that this prayer thing is all about you guys. But you work for us. You represent us. You aren't individuals who can say, "This prayer is good, that prayer is bad." The law doesn't allow you to do that. So if you really understand the religiosity of Phoenix, we are the fifth least religious city in the country. Twenty-seven percent of us in Phoenix are practicing no religion at all. As a matter of fact, practicing Christians in Phoenix are a minority. People who believe the Bible is true is only about seventeen percent. So you're getting represented here very loudly by a side that is a minority voice in Phoenix. So it's true with, in the federal government, too, ninety-eight percent of the people in Congress are Christian or Catholic, but only seventy-one percent in the country are. So the religiosity is not being represented. You aren't, none of you are representing the majority nonreligious in this city. So the people that come in here, you can check these numbers out anywhere you want. People that come in here and address their city, their government, and are confronted with Christian prayers, maybe the first time they've heard that in six or nine months. And it's offensive. You let the lady in the red hair talk for ten minutes because you liked what she said, and you expected what she said. And you kept asking her questions because you expected someone to say that.
Mayor, I have a question for him.
All right, Councilmember DeCiccio's question, but we are out of time. It's two minutes per speaker. We're trying to hold tight to that so we can get to all the speakers.
I'm sorry. I want to say one very quick thing. The Satanists want, are doing this because they want you to do what you're doing. They want you to reject them in public. They want you to show your true colors. They've done this in Oklahoma, where they got the ten commandments removed. They've done it in Florida.
Sir, we've had more than two minutes. Councilmember DeCiccio's question.
You threw out, "Sir." I have a question. So you threw out some statistics. Where did you get those statistics from?
I keep track of this all over the place. There, Pew does these religious studies several times a year. Different groups, they've always come out in different newspapers and publications online. I think the religious cities, there's different ways to measure that. The way they, I think the HuffPost is the one that had this article, this particular article. They can measure it on how many Bibles they sell in the city, on how many nonreligious in the city. A lot of different ways. But it all comes out the same way.
I think we're not, you need to move on to the next speaker. Vice Mayor, who's the next speaker? Kurt Mangum, followed by Leonard Clark.
Mayor Stanton, now City Councilmembers. My name's Kurt Mangum. First of all, I'd like to encourage you not to adopt the recommendation to silence prayer or have a moment of prayer. I agree with Councilman DeCiccio that in doing so, that that would satisfy the needs of this organization. What I would tell you is that we clearly understand that you're elected officials and that you represent everyone in the city of Phoenix. So we understand the uniqueness and the dynamics of it. Again, this is not just a city of Phoenix issue. This is a national issue. One of the things that I can tell each of you that I know our family, our church, churches throughout this community are praying for our leadership in you, Mayor, and our city council members for wisdom, for guidance, and direction. So you guys make the big bucks. So what I would encourage you to do, we've got to find some creative ways to make sure that we have prayer and that we, that it is, that we have prayer that people can voice their feelings and their religious beliefs. And I adopted the initial proposal. I propose that you adopt the initial proposal that you have to be local, vested in this community if you're going to be a part of the invocation. Maybe it's existing churches that are here, or, you know, organizations. So I just wanted to encourage you not to silence the prayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mangum. Leonard Clark, followed by Pastor Charles Johnson.
My name is Leonard Clark, and I was born right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital. And I also want to thank you, Mayor and Council, and despite our disagreements, all of the beautiful people who believe in God in their own way. But I, since I'm not a politician and I don't have to worry about people voting for me or not voting for me, you know, I'm just very concerned, highly concerned. This is what our forefathers had to grapple with. True, some say, "Well, we were founded upon Judeo-Christianity," et cetera, et cetera. But our forefathers also knew that in the Old World, in Europe, people were murdered, families were murdered, all of these things happening. They were torn apart over disagreements in religion. And I'm particularly passionate on this because, you know, I myself, and I think the veteran who stood up, I was raised as a Southern Baptist, but I myself served in a country called Iraq. And in Iraq, I had to watch people blowing themselves up, body parts everywhere, because this particular group, this particular tribe, they didn't like each other. They hated each other. And I just don't want that to come here. Our forefathers were successful in doing that so far. There can be a compromise. It takes courage, and I will forever admire Thelda Williams. I live in that district. Because she's not saying, "No prayer." And who are, and no offense, but who are the people who say that when I meditate and pray to myself, that I'm not praying to God? That's none of your business, just like it's none of my business how you vote, if you don't want to tell me, and how you pray. Because I don't need a middleman between me and my God. I don't need a high priest. Because the fact is, this is a country where we are allowed to worship God in our own way. I support the moment of silence, you know, but to sit here and imply that just because we don't want you to pick a particular religion, that I agree, I don't even want to say the word because I, Satan, you know, I can't...
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
To say that is wrong. In Iraq, every day we went out in our Humvees, there was a prayer for St. Michael. But that doesn't mean I don't believe in God just because I don't think you have the right, you have the right to pick or choose religions.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Charles Johnson, followed by Carl Lombardo and Tori Anderson.
My name is Dr. Charles Johnson, Senior Pastor, Victory Community Church. I want to thank the city council for shouldering the great responsibility of what you have to do. Many people are looking at this issue without also entertaining who has to make the decision on the issue. As a leader, I'm coming not only as a pastor, but I'm also coming as a retired veteran and soldier, but also to give a different perspective. I served eighteen of my adult life, years of my adult life overseas, and did not get an opportunity to be a part of my local community. I pastored overseas. My family grew up overseas in protecting this country. One of the things I understand is there are three levels of authority: spiritual authority, domestic authority, and civil authority. You guys have a tough job because I represent in my church and my family the spiritual and the domestic, but you have to operate in the civil authority. There's a lot of emotions and overtones that are going on here without us understanding that what we make a decision over concerning two to three minutes or two to five minutes of prayer is not only for this year, but for generations to come. The thing that we're faced with, gentlemen, and I applaud you on your fortitude in this, is that when we go, Mayor Stanton and Council, to do this, we have to look at what's happening in our valley. Many people are coming to Phoenix because it's attractive. When it's attractive, it's going to bring all kinds of people. But one thing we don't want to do, which is difficult, we don't want to decline what we already have to support what other people believe we should do. It's very difficult in today's society because Christianity is becoming irrelevant, and being politically correct is becoming relevant. We have to get to a point, all of us, to understand we got to live on this planet together. And I pray that you guys help us to do that.
Thanks, Peter. Tori Anderson, followed by Carl Lombardo. What is your name, sir?
Carl Lombardo.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, my greetings in the sweet name of Jesus. I was born in Cleveland, Ohio, in 1939 to a wealthy Italian family. I was born in Cleveland, Ohio in 1939, to wealthy Italian family. We were Roman Catholics, as most of the Italians are. I had a religion, but of course that religion didn't keep me. I pursued a life of sin. I made a complete mess of absolutely everything. I married a beautiful girl in nineteen ninety, nineteen sixty-three, and she started to pray when one day a couple of her students, she used to teach school, came over and they said, "Would you like to know Jesus better than you do?" And my very wise wife said, "Yes." Before they left, she was wonderfully born again, slain in the spirit, speaking in tongues, and she started to pray for me. Let me tell you about the power of prayer. This sinner didn't want nothing to do with Jesus. I liked my life of sin. But she prayed for me for ten years and two months straight. I'm not talking about once a day. She prayed constantly. The fervent and effectual prayer of the righteous availeth much. She prayed me into the arms of Jesus. June the sixth, nineteen eighty-two, at eleven forty-five in the morning, He performed supernaturally surgery on me, and I became a man of God. By that I mean, I used to hate the sin I loved, and I loved the Savior who I, who I sprinted all of those years. I'm forty-two and a half years old. I've been walking with Him ever since June the sixth of nineteen eighty-two. He made the difference in my life. He took this sinner and made a saint out of me. He can do the same for anybody else who comes to Him in faith. We want to lift up the name of Jesus. There is no other name in heaven on earth whereby a man must be saved than the name of Jesus Christ. Let's get that straight. Make no mistake about it. Jesus is the way.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lombardo. Mr. Tori Anderson is next, followed by Ellen Smith, followed by Carl Smith, please, as briefly as possible. We have a lot of cards to get through. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Tori Anderson. I live on Seventeenth Drive to South of Northern in Phoenix. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-two. I am here today on behalf of myself and my children. I have two small children. I am a Girl Scout leader, and I also work in issue-based advocacy. But I'm here today also as a minority. I am an atheist. I'm a proud atheist. And I am here to ask you, as government officials, to honor the minority, to honor the minority in this community, because we have a large majority, sixty-seven percent, according to the Pew Religious Studies released in two thousand and fourteen. Sixty-seven percent Christian in Arizona. So you're dealing with twenty-seven percent of us who affiliate with no religion whatsoever. And what we're asking you today is not to take prayer out of our community. We definitely want prayer in our community. I love driving by the Beatitudes Church. I love seeing the signs and the, and these wonderful things that the churches are doing in our communities. I'm not asking you to remove church from our community or anything like that. What I'm asking is to have government free of religious intrusion. Let's stick to government business. Let's talk about filling potholes. Let's talk about our economy. What we don't need, we need to stick to government business at a government level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ellen Smith is next, followed by Carl Smith. Is Ellen Smith here? All right, we're going to pass over Ms. Smith in this case. Carl Smith, are you here? Please move, come, as I call your name, please, please come close to the mic. We have a lot of speakers to get through. Please come. Thank you very much. You second that motion. Everyone is welcome to do the same. If the point you want, you want to make has been made, just say you, you second the motion, if you will. Juan Beltran, we should provide testimony. Please come forward, followed by Mona Constance. Mona, are you here? Please come forward and sit, maybe set some chairs close by, maybe at the front, maybe staff could help out, so we can move as quickly as possible. We have a lot of people to speak. Bernadette Alvarado is followed, following Ms. Constance. Maybe our staff could help out. Thank you very much. All right, is Juan Beltran here?
Yes.
Please come forward. It's your time. Followed by Mona Constance, followed by Bernadette Alvarado.
Well, I need one interpreter. I can explain everything in English. I use my language as Espanol, okay? As Reverend.
Did you want someone to translate for you, Mr. Beltran?
Come on.
No, she does it for the audience, those who may avail us of, so please, yeah, thank you.
I will try my best. I know there's better people that can do it, but.
Que Dios bendiga a todo el consilio.
That God bless all the council.
Yo se que están cansados.
I know that you're tired.
Porque yo estoy cansado.
I'm tired today. But I've been here two hours.
Quiero decirles algo.
I want to say something to you.
Que iba a leer la Biblia, pero mejor lo voy a hacer directamente.
I wanted to read the Bible to you, but I'm going to say it by my words.
El problema de la oración.
The problem of the prayer.
Individualmente, nadie nos lo va a quitar.
Nobody is going to take it away from us.
Porque tenemos ese privilegio de parte de Dios.
Because we have the privilege from God.
Que dondequiera que estemos, nosotros podemos orar.
Anyplace where we are, we can pray.
El problema que debemos definir aquí.
The problem we're defining today, right here.
Del, del consilio de la, de la ciudad.
That the council of the city.
Que se pongan de acuerdo.
That we are agreeing.
Porque no salga la oración.
That the prayer doesn't go away from here.
De este lugar.
From this place.
Tenemos muchos años.
We have so many years.
Tengo más de cuarenta años sirviendo al Señor en esta área de Phoenix.
Serving the Lord here in Phoenix.
Y la oración es lo que me ha sostenido y me ha dado todo lo que soy.
And give me all everything that I need.
Pero al sacar la oración de la ciudad.
If you take the prayer from the city of Phoenix.
Es algo terrible.
It's something terrible for the city.
La Biblia dice.
The Bible says.
Que nosotros tenemos que orar.
We have to pray.
Para poder alcanzar la victoria.
To achieve the victory.
Y hay un gran grupo, hay un gran grupo de pastor.
Thank you for testimony, very much. Mona Constance, we're done. I apologize, but we have two minutes. I apologize. Mona Constance is next. Ms. Constance, please come forward. I've got to keep the car. I apologize, but we have many, many, many speakers. Ms. Constance is next, followed by Bernadette Alvarado, followed by Diane Post. Ms. Post, if you're here, please come forward. Ms. Constance, good to see you.
Hi, my name is Mona Constance. I've been living in Phoenix for forty-three years now. I'm in District Four. I want to do a little bit different slant on this, because it just has really grieved me. It's not about diversity and political correctness, that's just excuses. This is a spiritual thing. This is in the spiritual realm. This is evil against good, and the devil is out, Satan is out to win, and we don't want to give him Phoenix. We want to keep God in control, and we want to be blessed. When God is in control, we're blessed and we're protected. When Satan is controlled, within control, he comes to steal, steal, kill, and destroy. And we don't want that for Phoenix, we don't want that for you, we don't want that for our families. And you guys, like the kings of Israel, are the leaders. And what you decide is what goes, happens to all of us. And we ask that you make a wise choice, because it's either God or it's Satan. It's good or evil. It's your choice. And that applies, and that's going to apply to all of us, what you do here today. This isn't about these other little things. This is about good and evil. And you can't, you got to have one or the other. You know, if you got God, you've got blessings and you've got protection. If you've got Satan, you've got a kill, steal, and destroy attitude of everybody. So what are you going to choose? You know, the, taking the prayer out of school, that takes God out too, so I'm not for that. But I would like to support Mr. DeCiccio and thank him for doing what he's done to bring the awareness to us for this, because it's up to you guys. Are you going to choose righteousness and good, or are you going to choose evil? It's your, your choice. And we want, we pray for wisdom, we pray for protection for you, for your family and all of our families.
Thank you very much. Ms. Post is next, followed by Errol McGinnis, followed by Azbel Gustavo. We have many cards to get through, as quickly as possible, please.
Diane Post, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm speaking as a longtime Phoenix resident, atheist, and lawyer. Many years ago, or more than two hundred years ago, our government had a good idea in the First Amendment to keep separate religion and government. Also, in Article Six, Paragraph Three, they said that elected representatives are bound by an oath to the Constitution, not to the Bible. Why did they create these provisions? Because then as now, there were dozens of different belief systems, but yet we are still one nation. A litany of presidents has supported this separation of church and state, and I'll be quoting. Thomas Jefferson, believing with you that religion is a matter which lies solely between the man and his God, that he owes account to no one other for his faith or his worship, that the legislative powers of government reach actions only and not opinions. I contemplate with sovereign reverence that act of the United States, of the whole American people, which declared that their legislature should make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, thus building a wall of separation between church and state. James Madison, it was the universal opinion of the century preceding the last that civil government could not stand without the prop of a new religious establishment, and that religion itself would perish if not supported by a legal provision for its clergy. The existence of Virginia conspicuously corroborates the disproof of both these opinions. Civil government, though bereft of everything like an associated hierarchy, possesses the requisite stability and performs its functions with complete success, while the number of industry and morality of the priesthood and the devotion of people have been manifestly increased by the separation of church and state. Rutherford Hayes, we all agree that neither the government nor political parties ought to interfere with religious sects. It is equally true that religious sects ought not to interfere with the government and political parties. We believe that the cause of good government and the cause of religion suffer by all such interference. John Kennedy, I believe in an America where the separation of church and state is absolute. Jimmy Carter, who needs no polishing of his religious credentials, I think the government ought to stay out of the prayer business. Since these presidents have spoken, we've become even more diverse, and we need, I would prefer we have no, no.
Thank you very much. Errol McGinnis is, is next. We're running out of time, I apologize. Ms. Post, you have to move on. Errol McGinnis is next, followed by Azbel, Azbel Gustavo. Ms. McGinnis, we have two minutes, two minutes per speaker, that is it. And you don't have to use the whole time. Errol McGinnis is next, followed by Azbel Gustavo, please.
Hi, my name is Errol McGinnis. A lot of the points that I was going to make were eloquently made, obeyed by previous speakers, so I'm going to be cutting mine quite short. It boils down basically to, I'm just the last paragraph of my speech, in calling this emergency referendum, the members of this council have stated to the media they did not want to become a first for any negative connotation. In calling this emergency referendum, they have succeeded in becoming a first. This is my first, to my recollection, of any city council that decided to vote. Which of these city's residents deserve to be represented by this council, and which of them are too stupid? Now, because I don't bow to an Abrahamic God, does that make me subject to a tweet that says that I'm too stupid to be represented by this council? I'm done.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGinnis. Ms. Alvarado is next. I apologize, skipped you over earlier, followed by Azbel Gustavo, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. Thank you for the privilege to be here and to speak and to share my opinion. I would like to ask you all, if you've ever heard of Psalms, Chapter Nine, Verse Seventeen, which says that, "The nation that forgets God shall be turned into hell." And I would like to ask you all today not to forget God in what you're doing. And I'm not suggesting that you're not thinking about it or not working towards doing the right thing, but I want to encourage you to consider the reality, that as our nation has, without doubt, we can see, has forgotten God in so many levels of, not only in government, politics, media, education, the legal system, we have actually seen that our country is imploding in so many areas. Not all areas, but we can see that there has been a detriment to the reality that we have forsaken God. So I want to ask you all today, of course, we need to pray. Of course, we need not to forget God, because if you do do that, if you say, "Well, we'll just not have prayer," that's actually forgetting the reality that our God gave us that privilege to bless our land and to bless our people. Proverbs eighteen twenty-one says that death and life is in the power of the tongue. So when you allow people to come in who are wanting to bless this nation and bless this city and bless the people, you are actually voting for things that are going to benefit you, your children, our country as a whole. So I'd like to ask you not to allow our nation, our city, our country, you all have the power to not let our city, Phoenix, Arizona, our state, to be turned into hell. We cannot forget that there is a, a reaping of what we sow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Azbel Gustavo is next, followed by Gustavo Gonzalez. Mr. Gustavo, you have two minutes.
I like to do this bilingual, to make sure everybody understands. God bless America.
Dios bendiga America.
Queremos agradecer a, a Council, a DeCiccio.
And we want to be grateful towards Council, DeCiccio.
A Council, Michael Nowakowski.
Also Councilman Nowakowski.
A Bill Gates.
Also Bill Gates.
Por ese soporte y esa buena intención a la ciudad de Phoenix.
For that support and that great intention for the city of Phoenix.
Yo creo que es importante que ustedes sepan que lo que se está peleando aquí no se ve con los ojos físicos.
And I think it's important for you guys to notice that while you're fighting here, you cannot see with your physical eyes.
Por eso los vemos un poco confundidos.
And that's why we see you a little bit confused.
Tenemos a nuestro ejército peleando por la seguridad de esta nación.
We have our military fighting for the security of this nation.
Y ustedes les quieren abrir la puerta al destruyente.
And then you have the door.
Y ustedes quieren abrir la puerta al que destruye. Al que destruye, al que roba.
And so do not open the door to the one that steals and destroys.
Si Dios no cuida la ciudad.
If God does not watch over the city.
En vano vela la guardia.
The guard men watch in vain.
Parece que tengo más de dos minutos.
And it seems like we have more than two minutes.
El minuto de silencio.
The moment of silence.
En lo personal.
In the personal.
Creo que solo se hace cuando alguien muere.
The moment of silence is only given when someone dies.
Pero esta ciudad es una ciudad viva.
But this city is alive.
Este estado es un estado vivo.
This state is a living city.
Y nuestro Dios también es un Dios vivo.
And our God is a living God.
Si alguien quiere hacer el minuto de silencio, que lo hagan en su casa.
If someone wants to go do the moment of silence, let them go do it at home.
Si alguien quiere hacer, invocar a Satanás, que lo hagan en su casa.
If they want to go invoke on Satan, go do it at home.
Pero no traigan eso a la ciudad.
But don't bring this to the city.
Thank you very much.
Yo creo que ustedes han sido puestos para cuidar nuestra ciudad.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Dios bendiga América.
Gustavo Gonzalez is next, followed by Reverend Scott Prior. I just wanted to, Mayor, I just wanted to thank the pastor.
Pastor, muchas gracias para todo que haces en esta comunidad. Y gracias para sus palabras a nosotros aquí. Pero es importante que recuerda que esta decisión es muy importante para toda la ciudad. Que hacemos hoy es un gran importante para toda la ciudad, eh, todo el estado, todos los Estados Unidos. Muchas gracias para todo.
Thank you very much. Gustavo Gonzalez is next, followed by Reverend Scott Prior, followed by Bishop Jose Rivers. Please come forward if your name was called, so you're ready to, in the queue, so we can move as quickly as possible. Gustavo Gonzalez? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Reverend Scott Prior is next, followed by Bishop Rivers, followed by Lynn Beardsley. Reverend Prior, please, up to two minutes.
I'm so sorry. We're going to move, we're going to keep moving forward, please. Thank you for your time tonight, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Scott Prior. I'm an ordained minister with the Universal Life Church. I've been listening to everybody's testimonies this evening, and one of the things that I seem to not understand is why people are wanting to not follow the councilwoman's idea of, of a moment of silence. Matthew six, six specifically states, "But when you pray, go into your room, close the door, and pray to your Father who is unseen; then your Father, who sees what is done in secret, will reward you." Isn't that what the Bible says? Shouldn't we support what Jesus said to the disciples? Instead, what we're doing is we're arguing about whose faith is better than another. It's ridiculous, okay? What we need to be doing is trying to put inclusion into government, because another thing that seems to be missing is that this is not a church. This building is a government establishment for doing government business. The government business outlined by the Constitution, and that's what we need to be following. So I support the moment of silence, because I believe that's what Jesus would be instructing all of us, as He has in the Bible, to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reverend Prior. Bishop Rivers, followed by Beardsley, Lyle Beardsley. Bishop Rivers, here? He's on his way. All right, how about? He's on his way. All right. How about Beardsley? Please come forward as quickly as possible, followed by Joy Talabi. Please come forward, Ms. Talabi, followed by Jeremy Helfkamp, representing Phoenix Human Relations Commission.
Say Eric Morelli, correct?
What?
Eric Morelli?
You're there? Give your testimony.
Okay, okay, fine. I'm here. My name is Eric Morelli. I'm from Surprise, Arizona. I'm here because I have personal knowledge of what Satanists do. Now, this was a long time ago. But it was at my high school, and I knew a friend, I had a friend who suddenly turned on me. And I'm going to make this short, because I have some legal arguments. They're going to, yeah, we can't, we can't operate as a belief that we're going to win this case based on halleluys and what the Bible says. We have to have good, solid, legal arguments in order to win this case. Okay, I happen to think that Commissioner Williams' moment of silence is very appropriate because of what it does. It prevents the Satanists from saying, "Well, I've listened for five months now to the council say the prayer," like many are suggesting, "and I haven't heard my prayer said yet. So unless you say my prayer, I'm going to take you to court." And I can promise you, based on Supreme Court decisions, that secular as well as non-secular prayers at government meetings are allowed. So you are putting yourself at risk of giving money to people who will smile at you, saying, "Thank you, Phoenix. Now we've got more money for our coffers." You don't want to go there. You don't want to go there. I don't like these people. The guy that I knew stole, his name was Arthur Whalen McCombs, and he stole the La Conquistadora statue from St. Francis Cathedral and the oldest paintings in the United States in Santa Fe during the time I was going to high school, turned on me, sent a note across the room calling my mom.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next speaker is going to be Bishop Rivers, followed by Lyle Beardsley. Is Lyle Beardsley here? Okay, Bishop Rivers, are you here? Somebody had to leave because of the late hour. Joy Talabi, are you here, Ms. Talabi? She had to leave. How about Jeremy Helfkamp, representing the Phoenix Human Relations Commission, followed by James Diebler. Mr. Diebler, are you here? Please come forward and be in the queue.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Jeremy Helfkamp, as has been mentioned, on behalf of the city's Human Relations Commission. The Human Relations Commission of the city of Phoenix exists and is ordained to advise this council on all matters pertaining to diversity, inclusion, equal opportunity, and the elimination of discrimination, including specifically discrimination on the basis of religion, which is what brings us here today. We released a statement earlier this week in which we plainly stated, based in part on the statement released by the city attorney, that in order to maintain that lack of discrimination, any solution to this question must be ecumenical, in our opinion. The substitute motion brought forth by Councilwoman Williams would certainly fall within those boundaries, as it would not discriminate against any group, against any individual. Likewise, the elimination of the invocation, or at least a religious invocation, would fall within those boundaries. However, it's our belief that if there is going to be an invocation opportunity available, it must be open equally and accessibly to everyone. Whether we agree with their beliefs, whether we choose to label them one way or another, is irrelevant. Under both law and principle, this city has worked tremendously diligently over the past several years to create an environment of inclusion for everybody. And we believe that once we start drawing that line, we're sacrificing what we stand for as a city and frankly, potentially facing significant penalties in the legal realm at great cost. If I can speak personally for a moment, I'd also like to add that it's been stated in the press by several members of this council that there's a belief that the group in question, scheduled for the February 17th invocation, is here to try and undermine the invocation process. As a personal citizen, I'm disturbed to see playing right into their hands and creating this issue, which is taking tremendous time and distracting from the city's business. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jeremy.
Can I answer any questions?
Followed by, oh, nope. I think we're good. Thank you very much. Thanks for your leadership on the Human Relations Commission. James Diebler is next, followed by Andre Matthews, followed by Pastor Michael Salmon. James Diebler, up to two minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, I am James Diebler. I live in Phoenix Council District Number 5. I am a friend of Glendale Mayor Jerry Waters, council member Jimmy Odoma, and Bart Turner. I support the First Amendment right, separation of church and state, and the right of free speech. I know that, I know the city of Phoenix is making a bad decision by inviting Satanists for a prayer at the council meeting on February 17. The city should invite the Diocese of Phoenix Bishop Thomas J. Obsef to do a prayer at the city council meeting, not the Satanists. I know I am Catholic. I am against that decision by the city of Phoenix. It will offend a lot of Catholics at the Diocese of Phoenix. If the Satanist group tried to come to the Glendale City Council meeting, then Glendale Mayor Jerry Waters will block it from doing a prayer. Yeah, I hope that Phoenix Councilmen Sal Dicicio, Whalen Gates, Michael Nowakowski, Thurlan Whalens, and Jim Whalens will block the Satanists from giving a speech.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diebler. How about Andre Matthews is next, followed by Pastor Michael Salmon, and then Lindsey Weinberger. Mr. Matthews, you're here?
Mr. Mayor, and to the city council members, to all of the constituents and fellow residents of the Phoenix Valley Region. My name is Andre Matthews. I am a presiding bishop of Fresh Fire Fellowship Ministries International. There's quite a number of pastors and leaders that we're covering here in the valley. Our church is also, the local headquarters church is also in the city of Phoenix. Years ago, short history, when I moved here, under the direction of God, I was gainfully employed through the city of Phoenix. And so I've enjoyed my time serving the community. Also, I've learned and gained quite a number of friendships and fellowships with many of the citizens of the city. I was also privileged in the 2005, 2007 era when the Katrina and Wilma evacuees returned or came to Arizona as one of the two individuals in the point-of-entry office. So we helped to deal with the social integration of them as they came into the great state and then city and outline regions of this city. On today, I am truly grateful for your leadership and how you have been able to manage and govern this great city. I join you in denying the secondary motion for a moment of silence. I agree with the principle of having you all make decisions as the proper individuals or representative groups to come and cause invocations. While we're not touting that any one set group or one set religious group does it, we thank you for the opportunity. And we do know that the legal entities that represent and help you will deal with the proper matters at hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bishop Matthews. Pastor Michael Salmon is next, followed by Lindsey Weinberger, followed by Zanardo Quintana. Pastor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and brothers and sisters in Christ, pastors, leaders of the church. I am against the motion for silence, and I'm for Councilman Sal Dicicio's issue or, you know, case here. But this is all banking on the fact that none of you council people will ever become Satanist or a faith that we don't accept. Because if, God forbid, Michael, Councilman Michael Nowakowski, is that the way you pronounce it? Forgive me, please, Nowakowski, becomes a Satanist, then we're going to have Satanist prayer here all the time. Nonetheless, it is a risk that I'm willing to take. It is a risk that I'm willing to endure for the fact that we do have prayers that will be spoken here, good prayers that God will hear. I believe that you have a very strong city council. Mr. Brad Holmes here, who is very knowledgeable on the constitutional rights, and I'm sure will, has already advised you of where you're going to vote. As for the Satanist prayer coming the 18th, I don't believe that the city has a choice but to allow it to happen for the sake of, it's already been said, but afterwards, to protect the city from any lawsuits. It has to allow it to happen, and then afterwards, institute the ordinance or the emergency thing 4.1 or 4.3, excuse me. When you're thinking about what you're going to say up here, it's like, "Oh, I got it." You come up here and you just, you lose it. Nonetheless, again, I support Councilman Sal Dicicio, and I ask that this council also take that risk and allow prayers to be said. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Pastor Salmon. Good to see you. Lindsey Weinberger, followed by Zanardo Quintana, followed by Shawnee Corbin.
Hi, I'm Lindsey Weinberger, and I am an outreach pastor in Phoenix at Church for the Nations. Been working in the slums of Phoenix for 18 years. And I have had two people turn down prayer in 18 years, prostitutes, drug addicts, you name it. I've been there. I've seen it. And this is what I just want to say. I believe in the life of our community. The Bible says that death and life are in the power of the tongue. I believe in spoken prayer. When we speak something, we create something. It is the goal of Satan to silence and muzzle people's voices. The spoken prayer is crucial to the life of our community. In the words of Jesus himself, he said, and it was quoted many times here today, "That Satan comes to steal, to kill, and to destroy, but Jesus comes to give life." Our goal is not to shut down the Satanists, but it's our goal to shut down their agenda, which is to bring death and destruction over Phoenix. So let our common goal be to have people pray that have an agenda of life and love of our community and not death and destruction.
Thank you very much. Mr. Quintana, and Ms. Zanardo Quintana, followed by Shawnee Corbin, then followed by Irma Groot.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton, and city council people. My name is Zanardo Quintana, and I'm a native of the city of Phoenix. And I reside here now, where I'm a small business owner, and I also serve as chairman of the Secur Coalition for Arizona. The Secur Coalition for Arizona is an organization that's dedicated to removing prayer, removing religious influence from our government agencies and our government policies. I know it's easy to think that you're in church when you step into this chamber, particularly today. And I'm with those that hold that everyone here is entitled to believe whatever they choose to believe. What they're not entitled to do is to impose each of their beliefs on all the rest of us. Not the Satanists, not the Christians, not the Muslims. None of them can impose it on the rest of us. And I think the duty of this particular body is to make the laws governing the state, governing the city of Phoenix. And they do it usually very well. I wanted to make one quick point. An earlier reference to our Judeo-Christian principles. I challenge anyone here to open their Bible and find the word "democracy" or "republic" in it. It isn't there. We do not live in a Judeo-Christian culture. We live in a Greco-Roman culture. That's where that came from. Finally, I like to mention, repeat the words of wisdom of Councilman Dicicio. He said, "Government should not be in the business in which it has no business. Religion is not the business of this body." You can't walk out the door without tripping over several churches, which is their job. If I want to be inspired by religion, I don't have to go very far from this chamber to get it. And lastly, government should not be devising schemes to circumvent the law. This scheme of finding a way around it does exactly that.
All right, Shawnee Corbin is next, and then followed by Irma Groot, and then Elias Garcia. Ms. Corbin.
Thank you for the privilege of speaking to you, Mayor Stanton, and councilwomen and councilmen this day. I appreciate it. I want to know, I want to express that I see you as the gatekeepers of this great city of Phoenix, Arizona, that you are the guardians of this city. And to go with my analogy, we know that most mayors anywhere can offer a key to the city to anyone. So we can envision that it is, there are gates to the city. We may not see them like we did in days historically, where there were walls and where there were gates that you come through, but in the realm of the unseen, you are the gatekeepers of this great city, of which we have the Great Seal of Arizona, which has the emblem. Thank you. It has the, it says "Deus," which means "God enriches." God has truly enriched this great state, and he has done so under your supervision as well. And we want to keep God enriching the state. And as it was formerly said, that in invocation, the root word is to invoke. So are we invoking still the blessings of God on our state and our city? Are we invoking the curses of the deity spoken of that they serve as Satan? Because to invoke is to invoke a deity. So we invoke and stand with the Great Seal of the state of Arizona, that God enriches and blesses our state. I also see you as the guardians of this great city, that the decision you make today will serve to bless the people of Arizona, or it will serve to leave some gates open. I pray that you will make the decision to watch over those that you govern in the way God would have you do it.
Irma Groot is next, and then followed by Elias Garcia, and then followed by Carla Barschi. Ms. Groot? Good to see you. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, city council. Charlie, sit. I won't be here to preach to you. I'm not a pastor. I am an immigrant to this country from the Netherlands. When I took my oath of citizenship, it was under God. When I joined the U.S. Air Force and I was crippled in Kuwait, so all you people of whatever religion, faith, or cult can speak freely here at this forum, my oath was under God. When we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, it is under God. Now, this T-shirt that I am wearing, I got in an RV thing long ago. It says, "What do you think is going to happen?" And underneath, it says, Galatians 6, Chapter 7, or Paragraph 7, excuse me. What does it say? "Don't mock God." "When you do so, you will reap what you sow." And I'm not preaching. It's just interesting that I got this T-shirt instead of the one I wanted, and I had to dig through a box to find it. Because here I am today. And when you mock God, you mock me. Because even though I'm in this chair, I am blessed. I am blessed to serve this country. I save lives. We are blessed, okay? Do not invoke a cult. When you invoke a prayer, then you are invoking for the city.
Thank you very much, Ms. Groot. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service to the country. Elias Garcia is next, followed by Carla Barschi, followed by Angel Camps. Are you going to be writing translation?
I am.
Okay. Blue Crawley, do you want headphones?
Yep.
Okay, could someone get Mr. Crawley headphones so he can get the translation from our official translator? Okay. Maybe, then why don't, Mr. Garcia, why don't we let the next speaker go, and then we'll- Maybe, then why don't, Mr. Garcia, why don't we let the next speaker go and then we'll make sure we get Mr. Crawley, uh, headphones. Uh, so you'll go next. Thank you so much. Carla Barsky, excuse me, are you here?
I am a child of God and he has sent me here, has given me an earthly home with parents kind and dear. Lead me, guide me, walk beside me, help me find the way. Teach me all that I must do to live with him one day. I am a child of God and so my needs are great. Help me to understand his will before it grows too late. Lead me, guide me, walk beside me, help me find the way. Teach me all that I must know to live with him one day. I am a child of God. I am a child of God. Rich blessings are in store. If I but learn to do his will, I'll live with him once more. Lead me, guide me, walk beside me, help me find the way. Teach me all that I must do to live with him one day. Mayor and council members, I would like to suggest to you that the item that you have before you has absolutely nothing to do with the right to pray or to not pray. It's not even about silence. What it's about is do we want God in this room or don't we? Do we want God to help each and every one of you to lead you and guide you and walk beside you and help you find the way so that we, as a city, can be blessed and so that we can prosper? If you don't know that God lives, rely on my testimony, because I know that he does and I testify to you that he does and I know that I want him in this room each and every time. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, okay, so now, Mr. Garcia, and we have the headphones, go ahead, thank you.
Si, buenas tardes. Good evening. Uh, represento una comunidad hispana. I represent a Hispanic community. Que esta con grande incertidumbre. And that it's, it's on fire. Acerca de lo que se va a tomar de decisión. In regards to the decisions that is about to be made. Y creemos que la oración o la invocación como ustedes le llaman. And we believe that prayer or invocation as you call. No queremos que se remueva. We don't want you to remove it. Es parte ya de algo que hemos aprendido. It is a part of something that we have already learned. Aunque así tenga el riesgo de escuchar otras invocaciones. Although we might have that risk of listening to other sorts of invocations. Está en sus decisiones. It's in your decision. Porque el silencio, uh, no está bien. Because a moment of silence is not right. Son dos cosas. And these are two, two things. La primera es esa. The first is this. Necesitamos la oración. We need prayer. Segundo. Secondly. Como padre. As, as a father. Antes de todos los títulos. Be above all other titles. Mis hijos están viendo. My children are watching. Y están escuchando algo. And they're listening to something. Que les está perturbando. That is disturbing them. Uh, el permiso de tener una oración satánica. And, and, and by carrying this satanic prayer. Uh, me preocupa eso. And this worries me. Y nuestra comunidad está preguntando todo eso. And our community is asking all of these things. Pero, pero darles una ilustración, no sé cómo la tome. But I wanna give you an illustration. Pero antes que cualquier título soy papá. But above all, I'm a father. Antes de cualquier posición soy padre. Before any position, I'm a father. Mis hijos me preguntan muchas cosas. And my children ask me so many things. Yo no dejaría que el chapo jugara canicas con mis hijos. I would not let El Chapo play marbles with my children. O Jack el destripador. Or, or Jack the, the. I'll bless you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Angel Campos, followed by, uh, Michael Pierce, followed by Thomas Bethke. Mr. Campos, good to see you.
Thank you. My name is Angel Campos and, uh, good evening to all. I came to Phoenix in 2006. I, I lived most, most of my life in Tucson. However, when I came to Phoenix, uh, I paid my taxes in Phoenix. Uh, I left Tucson behind. Uh, I love America. I like the fact that our constitution talks about the freedom of speech, freedom of religion. And, uh, by the way, I, I am a pastor in a, in a, uh, church in Phoenix. But, uh, I, I believe that the council and, uh, the major, uh, are here to serve the people in Phoenix. I believe, uh, even though I, I know whom I'm believing in my faith, I believe in Jesus Christ, but, uh, I, I'm here to let you know, uh, I'm expecting you guys to stand up for the people of Phoenix and I hope that the, the people that come from Tucson, go to Tucson and make their voice, we heard over there. But, uh, I believe that here in Phoenix is my city and I expect you guys to, to defend for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Michael Pierce, your right testimony, followed by Thomas Bethke.
Good afternoon, uh, Michael Pierce, PhD, um, stands for Piled High Deep. Um, "Congress shall make no law establishing religion or the free exercise thereof." Now, let's look at that really carefully, because it will come up if it goes to court. Let's also look at that half phrase, separation of church and state. The scholar in me takes offense, because that, uh, phrase is directly taken from Thomas Jefferson in a letter written to a Baptist minister in 1801 upon Thomas Jefferson becoming president. He was replying to a question from the Baptist minister saying, "Will the federal government allow me, a Baptist, to practice and express and pray my prayer without government, uh, impending me?" And this is where Thomas Jefferson said, "There is a separation of church and state." The open marketplace, the open freedom to choose, to pray, will not be regulated. The government has no business in establishing a religion, but they have no business in regulating it either. Now, Justice Holmes tells us in his opinions regarding free speech, and freedom of religion is linked to speech, is linked to association. When we are confronted with speech that we find offensive, Justice Holmes advised us that the only antidote to speech that is hateful or offensive or otherwise unpalatable is more speech and more freedom. I think of...
Thank you very much, Dr. Pierce. Uh, next speaker is gonna be Thomas Bethke, uh, followed by Ken Smith. Mr. Bethke, good to see you. Is Mr. Smith here?
Okay, I wanna say this is one of the interesting things I've ever been to. I was here a while back, but we're fighting a war against God and people or whatever. Doug, the, what we're doing here is we just, I agree with Thelma Williams, it's simple, it's very simple with the liberty that we have. It's just a moment of silent prayer will cover all the beliefs and then that's the rest of the story. God bless America.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Smith, did you write testimony?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's an honor to be here. My name is Ken Smith, I'm a fifth generation Arizonan, I'm an attorney, just a couple of points. I want you to know that there are things worse than lawsuits for you to consider. I have three children, eight grandchildren. My whole life, we have prayed to keep Satan away from us, out of our homes, and try to do good. Can't imagine having a Satanist church come here and invoke the powers of darkness over the city of Phoenix, when most of us pray every day to keep him away from us, to keep him out of our lives. I know a couple of things be true, I know there's a God that loves us, but there's also a Satan, our common enemy who wants to destroy us. Why invite him here? One of my favorite scriptures, and I'll conclude with this, says, "Behold, this is a choice nation, and who whatsoever nations self-possesseth shall be free from bondage and from captivity and from all other nations under heaven, if they will but serve the God of this land, who is Jesus Christ." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I have many other cards here, not, representing individuals not wishing to speak, I think most in support of the concept that, uh, a satanic temple should not, uh, provide invocation before this body, but I'll make sure they get submitted, uh, for the, uh, for the record. I have no other cards for public testimony on this, uh, on this item.
I put in a card, I did not get it.
Please come forward then, as quickly as possible. I apologize, we, uh, there were many, many cards, but, uh, if we missed one, I apologize.
I understand, sir, no problem.
Uh, okay. This, so this will be the last speaker on this item and then I'll turn to members of the council. We still have additional business even after this item, uh, that has to be, uh, attended to as well.
So much for being first in and first out, first in and last out. Um, you'll have to forgive me, this is my first time.
Welcome.
I heard Councilman D'Esseo.
Say your name for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Jocelyn Nicole Nickel, I'm a resident of the great city of Phoenix.
Thank you.
I heard Councilman D'Esseo speak earlier on a hotel issue, talking about a scheme to circumvent the law is ill-conceived. I think this correlates exactly to that same type of scheme. I won't take much of your time, all I have to say on this matter is, Jefferson once wrote, "I am for freedom of religion and against all maneuvers to bring about a legal ascendancy of one sect over another." A member of this committee asked that anyone who approves of the upcoming invocation of the satanic temple should put their name in the record. I, Jocelyn Nicole Nickel, proudly stand with Thomas Jefferson and sign my name to protecting and defending the Constitution of the United States of America. Those of you who will use your authority to deny others of their constitutional right to religious freedom shall also be on that very record. That's all I have to say. I cede the floor.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, okay, now I'm gonna turn it to members of the, uh, of the council. I just wanna make sure we clear up any, uh, misunderstanding on the issues. The original, uh, motion was an emergency, um, a, a policy to change the way we, um, choose the providers of the invocation before this, uh, city council. It would invoke the emergency clause. As a result, uh, the invocation that was scheduled by, in, by the city clerk's office to be given on February 17th would not be given under that, uh, policy. The substitute motion, uh, by Councilwoman Williams, the one that is on the floor now to be discussed, would also be implemented, uh, immediately and then result in us, um, having a moment of silent prayer and ref, reflection from this point forward, also meaning that the satanic temple would not provide an invocation before this, uh, city council on the 17th. Both of them, at least as it relates to that issue, uh, arrive at the same, uh, conclusion. I don't mean to speak for our city attorney, I think our, our city manager has authorized for this purpose, normally we don't want our city attorney to give legal advice from the floor, but has authorized the attorney to at least speak why the original proposal, uh, the original motion would put the city, if, if that one were to pass, would put the city in a position of likely being in, uh, acting unconstitutionally, therefore in a losing position in a lawsuit, whereas the, the substitute motion by Councilwoman Williams would put us on much more solid legal footing, at least as it relates to constitutionality of our actions. So, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it to you and see if it's okay, uh, ask you if, if our, our city attorney can at least provide brief comments and I hope I have accurately described the legal, uh, the legal dilemma.
Mayor, yes, given the, uh, given the significance of the item, it is appropriate for the city attorney to, to do what you said. I'll turn it over to City Attorney Brad Holmes.
Mayor, members in the council, thank you for the opportunity to address this issue, very important issue to our community. Um, in this case, Ms. Short followed the scheduling rules that were in place at the time that she booked the opportunity to give the prayer in city council meeting, so she followed the rules. These rules assured her of the right to pray on February 17th unless the council modified its practice of spoken prayer at council meetings. If the council adopted a moment of silent prayer and applied it immediately, that change in practice would not suppress a minority religious viewpoint while favoring more broadly held religious viewpoints. Council could also change the scheduling of spoken prayers prospectively, which is the first motion that was before the council. But the new procedure could not be applied retroactively, because the new procedure, though not unconstitutional on its face, would be viewed as what's called an as-applied violation of the First Amendment. So where we are, are now is this. Mayor and council can decide that no one will offer spoken prayers going forward, but mayor and council cannot decide that this woman will not be allowed to offer her spoken prayer, because if the mayor and council were to do that, um, we have already been told by representatives of the person who followed the rules and booked the prayer back in December for February 17th, that they would file a lawsuit. Our view as the city attorney's office and my view personally as the city attorney is that we would be likely to lose that case.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Holmes. I just wanna make sure we got that, uh, clear. Obviously, the city council can ignore the advice of our, our legal counsel, but I wanna make sure that people understood the legal framework under which we're making this very, very important decision. I'll now turn it to, uh, members of the, uh, of the city council for comments they may have on the motion. Mr. Uh, City Manager, I'm looking at your look on your face and wondering...
I'm just observing the look on the motion maker's face and wondering if there was a question we needed to answer.
Councilwoman Williams, I'll turn it to you first.
Well, no, he was, uh, Brad was very difficult to hear and I didn't quite understand when or hear what you were saying about you, application and retroactive and how that applied. So, could you repeat that for me, please?
You, you bet. Uh, Mayor, Councilwoman Williams. So, the council could change, um, the scheduling of spoken prayers prospectively, meaning in the future. We could change the way we schedule those, which is essentially what the original matter on the agenda contemplates. That's okay to do that, that's constitutional to change it. But what we couldn't do is apply it retroactively in this case to a person who had already booked the prayer back in December for February 17th. That would be an unconstitutional suppression of a minority religious viewpoint, which is in contravention of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Williams, to answer your question, Lisa, it's the legal framework of our operate, essentially what he's saying is that if we move forward with even what the original motion was, uh, but, um, canceled the previously scheduled invocation of 17th, it would put us in significant legal hot water. We'd be acting in an unconstitutional way, I think is what he was saying. Okay, Councilman Waring.
Uh, so, I guess I'm surprised to hear Brad say that, given some of his comments in the paper, so, uh, we'll get that in a second. But several of the speakers, quite a few of the people on my Twitter and Facebook page and so forth, talked about the constitutionality of the plan in general, takeout February 17th and prospective versus, uh, doing away with their speaking on the 17th. There's nothing wrong with the system where the council members themselves select individuals to come for the prayer on a rotating basis. It's the way Congress does it, it's the way the state legislature does it. So anybody who says this is a violation of church and state, are they correct?
Um, Mayor, Councilman Waring, uh, the, the tradition of allowing, uh, individual, um, elected officials to participate in the prayer selection is not unconstitutional on its face. The way a lawyer looks at constitutionality is that's only the first of two questions that are presented. So on its face, it's constitutional to go that route, not a problem. The question is, the second one, whether or not it's applied fairly so as not to suppress a minority religious viewpoint.
I understand, but I wasn't asking about that. I think, I think the speakers were trying to claim the high ground on just the idea that we should be having a prayer at all, and they are wrong in that analysis.
Prayer is constitutional in this setting.
And a government, we're a government body, so...
Yes.
By definition, then, a government prayer, a government body.
Congress, state legislatures and city councils may have prayer, that's correct.
And they do it now. There's nothing, they did it when I was in the state legislature, it sounds, it sounds like Congress is doing it right now, we heard that the state legislature is doing it even, probably even as we speak, if they're in session, so, um, so that's too broadly stated. I didn't want people at home, I knew what your answer was gonna be, but I, I didn't want people at home to be confused by that. It is also not, uh, outside the bounds, so these people who wanna come speak on the 17th are from Tucson?
Um, my understanding is that that's correct, that the...
And they self-identified in the paper, I assume they know where they live, so...
Um, the, the people that speak in the paper are wide and varied, the individual, um, who is booked to pray is not the individual who's given the most interviews in the paper. That individ, the individual who's booked to pray is a woman by the name of Michelle Short. My understanding is she lives in Tucson, but I have not verified that.
There was a case in 2014 saying, "We don't have to have people from, out of the city pray." Is that right? I mean, that's, that's a, I'm not a lawyer, so you can give as much legalese about that as you like, but is that kinda the long and short of it?
Uh, Mayor, Councilman Waring, you're correct. The case said that a city does not have to, in the, in effort to achieve religious balancing, does not have to go beyond its borders to find some other religion to... does not have to go beyond its borders to find some other religion to add to its religious balancing. That's correct.
So for both the main points, really the only points of the motion that I made, both would be constitutional going forward.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, that's correct. If applied prospectively, meaning in the future, that would be correct.
Okay. I will just point out your comments in the Republic on Sunday. You're quoted rather extensively. It says, "Holm," which is you, "likened the councilman's proposal," which is me and the other three, "to prayers in Congress where lawmakers can invite people from their district. Holm said the proposal wouldn't directly exclude the Satanic temple." Here's your quote, "I don't see that following the new procedure would necessarily give them a right to sue because she wouldn't be prohibited from giving a prayer. She would just have to follow the procedure," Holm said, referring to Michelle Short. So we're speaking specifically about this case and the item on the 17th, I assume, because you're mentioning her by name, or at least that's what's mentioned here, "a temple member expects to give the prayer." There's another paragraph I'll get to in a second. Why is that different than what you're saying here? Because it is different.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, in the context of the interview with the paper, I was talking about prospectively, meaning that the councilman's proposal and the rules, if applied prospectively, would not necessarily give her a right to sue.
But that's not the way it's written up here. I think we agree on that.
I haven't focused on, and I'm sorry, I don't have the language of the article in front of me, Councilman, but...
Provided, but...
So I'm not familiar with exactly how it's quoted, but in context, the point that was made is the procedure is not unconstitutional on its face, as long as it is applied prospectively and doesn't deprive this person who has a minority religious viewpoint of having followed the rules, been booked to pray on the 17th, then it would be, it wouldn't give her an opportunity to sue.
But I could see why people reading this article would be confused. It seemed like we were on firm legal footing. My staff sat with you and wrote this up and talked about the emergency clause for a great chunk of Friday afternoon. But, so here we are, and we're getting slightly different advice than we had before. It continues, "But the debate could be moot if Short doesn't live in Phoenix." Again, we're referring to her, and she's the one coming on the 17th. Holm said the city doesn't have to let nonresidents give the prayer, referring to a 2014 Supreme Court ruling. Not making all this stuff up. DeHan, who I believe is the attorney or one of the other Satanists from Tucson, I guess, and he's the one, I think he references, giving more interviews and so forth, told the Republic that he and Short live in Tucson, and Short's Facebook page states that she lives in Tucson. Holm said the city has received conflicting information about where Short lives. But again, it seems to imply that if she doesn't live in Phoenix, we could have excluded her. I think I can speak, there's at least one lawyer who might disagree with your analysis that we can't use the 2014 case to ban it from February 17th. Is that, but you're saying now, you're sure that we can't use it now that we know that she's not a Phoenix resident?
Mr. Holm can say anything for sure, but he's given us the best advice he can, and I think for this instance, it's okay for the community to hear it, but yeah, please, Mr. Holm.
Okay, before he answers that, and I guess I'll say, I'm surprised that he's getting... I guess we are assuming that my motion won't pass because we are now apparently giving away our case if it should pass and we implement the program. This is surprising and not typical behavior of the city. This is why we have executive session in the first place, is not to give away our legal strategies. But now that we have, I figure I might as well just forge ahead, so I'm curious as to his interpretation of this case.
First of all, I want to make sure, at least in my analysis, that there's no novel legal theories. This is a constitutional interpretation, constitutional law. So if we end up getting sued, this would not put us in any legal disadvantage. This is not how we're positioned the case. These are the straight constitutional arguments that he is providing. There's nothing novel about that. Mr. Holm?
I would say what's obvious and novel to you might not be to another lawyer or judge, so I guess I would have preferred to have them sort this out, but we've already given away the story, I guess. So Brad, why don't you respond?
With all that back and forth, I apologize, Mayor and Councilman Waring. Now, I'm not exactly sure of the question.
Okay, so the question is, I have heard from at least one lawyer who believes the 2014 Supreme Court case does say that we could say, oh, we found out, again loosely translated, you don't live in Phoenix. She says she doesn't live in Phoenix. Facebook says she doesn't live in Phoenix. We could say, oh, you know what, sorry, we shouldn't have scheduled you, so what do you say to that?
The key here is the rules of engagement that were in place when she booked the opportunity to pray. If the Department of Motor Vehicles, for example, were all of a sudden to change the glass correction requirement for driver's licenses, and people who had previously qualified now don't qualify under the new rule, the Department of Motor Vehicles can't revoke those licenses of the people who qualified previously. When they come up for renewal, perhaps they can then impose the new rule, and that's the key here, is that we're imposing or potentially imposing a new rule. You can't impose a new rule retroactively under these circumstances. That's basic, fundamental First Amendment and constitutional law.
Fair enough. Again, it seems to contradict what was written here in the newspaper. I suggested yesterday, I thought very reasonably, hey, I read it a certain way, I think a lot of the people did as well, perhaps we should send out or contact the reporter and explain further what was meant. I was told at the time, oh, we can't do that, executive session and so forth. Now here we are, we've discussed all the issues that would have come up in that conversation. In a form that's broadcast on TV, people in Kabul could be listening to this right now on the internet, so I am a little surprised that what I thought was a reasonable request to clarify with a reporter and by definition, the public who might read this article, I thought that was a reasonable request that I guess was shunted aside, and now I guess we're explaining it sort of after the fact. I will say this about, I have a little bit of axe to grind about this. This is a case for 2014. You know, we went ahead and didn't change our policies. Apparently, nobody notified the city clerk's office. You are not city attorney, so it's not a criticism of you. I am surprised we have a pretty big legal department. We have a big lobbying team that is supposed to be keeping track of what's going on in Washington and so forth. I have complained about this before vociferously. We have this big team, and stuff like this, and the FAA, and numerous other issues just seem to slip through the cracks. So nobody told the city clerk's office, it sounds like, that there was this case where we could reject people who were applying from outside of Phoenix. And what happened then is a Satanist applied, and apparently nobody sitting in the city clerk's office thought, you know, I wonder if the council people would like to know that. I think that might be something they'd want to know, that a Satanist is coming, just for information purposes only. So we found out about it, and now here we are, we chewed up, you know, three hours or something. People have suggested on my Facebook page, et cetera, because we didn't have a whole lot of dialogue with actual Satanists today, that this is a waste of time, why am I wasting the time, and so forth. Well, this wasn't my idea, but certainly there are citizens out there, whether some of these folks respect their opinion or not, who feel very strongly about this issue, as do I, but take me out of this. I thought having a debate was healthy, so I made, with you in full, you worked on it on Friday, so I thought we were on the same page. We put this out on Friday, and we're having a discussion. I think it's healthy that we are. However, it would probably be more productive to be discussing pensions and so forth. So if city staff had been a little more cognizant of the current rules, we wouldn't be in this situation at all. We would have had new rules, which would have allowed us to say no to the Satanist doesn't live in the city, council people pick the people who give the prayer, and we wouldn't be in this situation. It would all be constitutional. So I don't think it's unreasonable for me to have my back up a little bit about how this has gone. Going forward, I hope, again, we can do better, because I don't think what I'm asking is unreasonable, given the enormous amount of money we spend on the two departments I just mentioned. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Comments, any other comments or questions as it relates to the motions on the table? Councilman Nowakowski, please.
So Mayor, I have the Supreme Court decision back in May 5th of 2014, and to me, I think it regulates, that we can't regulate the content of the prayer, but we could regulate the person giving the prayer. Is that right or wrong, to your opinion?
Oh, Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, it's absolutely right that we cannot regulate the content of prayer. We also cannot regulate who gives the prayer, other than we don't have to seek out nonresidents. And again, the issue here is the rules of engagement that were in place in December when this person booked the prayer, as opposed to the rules we're contemplating today in the current motions.
Another question is, after the 17th, for the city clerk, how many other individuals are already booked or scheduled to do prayers? I mean, is this the only person scheduled for prayer, or is there others?
This is the last one. We have not scheduled any for a couple of weeks. The February 17th is the last meeting anyone is scheduled.
I heard from staff that we have it up to, I mean, all the way through the month of March, so I'm confused. I'm getting mixed messages that this isn't the only person that's scheduled, that we have people scheduled all the way through March. That's what we were told today. So I'm not sure who's not telling the truth here, but I mean, it's not just one person going to get affected by this decision. There's going to be several individuals, right? So can I have some clarification on that?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski...
First of all, I want to, to the best of our ability, ask staff if they know whether or not other people have applied, at least to provide the invocation for this council, whether they've been scheduled or not. Sounds like they haven't been scheduled, but there may be people in the queue, if you will, but...
Well, Mayor, I'm confused, because when was this one actually scheduled?
Do we know when...
I was told back in December. That was more than a month out, right? So if our practice is to schedule, if we scheduled this individual a month out, we wouldn't have scheduled other ones a month out. Something's not right. It's not, it doesn't smell right, doesn't look right. Something's wrong here.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, this is, the February 17th is the last one that is scheduled. When the council began having discussions and had an executive session about changing the rules, we stopped scheduling any further invocations until the issues were resolved and the policy was set.
All right, additional questions? Councilman DeCiccio, do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, Mayor, it's going to be more of a comment. What you're hearing here today is a rigging of a presentation. You have a city attorney that literally came out with a presentation earlier, now he's rigged it to be able to get this presentation the way he did today. That's what's occurring. So let me be a little bit more direct. I'm going to, you know, basically get a little bit more excitement out of this thing, because what's happening here is you're seeing a long-term tradition literally being changed overnight. Did any of you hear it, other than through me, that there might be a potential that they're going to be banning prayer? No! It was all done because, all these things get done behind closed doors at the city of Phoenix. So let me tell you what Plan B is. Pastor Gonzalez, is that Keithy? Okay. Pastor Gonzalez called me, and he goes, "What's Plan B, Sal?" Because I knew this rigging was going to occur here. This is what's going, this is what happens at the city of Phoenix. The Sheraton was rigged, the water rate increase was rigged, this is rigged. So what I've done is I've worked with other council members here. This is not going to end tonight. If we fail and prayer goes away at the city of Phoenix, they ban prayer at the city of Phoenix. Some of us have already prepared a present, a letter here. This is Plan B, that will literally take this, a vote to the public. We're going to ask for a special meeting of the council to vote to take this to the public, because you know what? I've heard from this many people, just from my office alone, now these are small pieces of paper, who want to keep prayer at the city of Phoenix. This city is rigging things, and we have an opportunity to take the city back in our own hands tonight, and we're going to start doing that. Because I'll tell you what, I'm done with this kind of attitude that I've heard here. You have a city attorney literally changing the rules, changing the presentation, and rigging it, rigging the presentation tonight in order to accommodate whatever agenda that they want to give here at city staff. So let me cover just a couple things, what Plan B is going to be at the city of Phoenix. I was going to give a different type of presentation, but I'm going to give you this one instead, because I want to give you hope. I want you to walk out of here knowing that this is not going to stop tonight if we lose this vote. What's going to happen is this, I'm going to ask for a special election, and some of us have already signed off on a letter. It's done with an attorney. If this doesn't work, then we're going to go to the streets looking to take an initiative. I already talked to some of the churches. They want to go out there, get their groups together. Then this will be on the ballot at the next city council election, when everybody else has to vote on this thing. That is what's going to happen, and I'm telling you, there are going to be thousands. I already had one person, one person who's connected with all the churches, saying he can get over 26,000 signatures himself because of all the churches he's connected to. Members of the LDS community, members of the Catholic community, and members of the Protestant community that he's connected to. So we're going to take this, after this, because what's occurring here, I can already see what's happening, we're going to take this, and you're going to have an opportunity to decide whether or not the city of Phoenix bans prayer or allows prayer to occur here at the city of Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to members of the council.
Councilman Nowakowski, Jim Waring, and myself.
Questions or comments about the substitute motion? Councilman Waring, you've asked a lot. Are you got another one? Please go right ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So you said you stopped taking the applications. Is that right? Or you just didn't get any more, or...
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I'm not sure now whether we've had any others. We have not scheduled anybody else. We stopped the scheduling of anyone pending what the new rules would be, so we wouldn't have this situation.
I was unaware of that, so I guess that's okay, because you're not taking any more applications. Is that correct?
We are not scheduling anyone, correct.
All right. I guess I didn't expect necessarily that we'd be talking about banning the prayer. It's been going on for 65 years in the city of Phoenix, since I think they said 1951, and that is disappointing to, I think, me and a lot of us. You know, I did, I did speak up and say, you know, I don't think, at first I was just going to walk out with a Satanic prayer. I'm a big believer in just not giving people attention who clearly are trying to get attention and change your behavior. Change theirs, ignore until they go away. However, I did decide Friday afternoon, we're going to fight this out as much as possible, so this is probably the last step in the line. I do want to say I'm not, I'm not necessarily, I'm disappointed in the city performance on some of this, but I'm not, I am chalking it up to not being as laser-focused as maybe it could be, rather than anybody trying to pull a fast one over me. I don't think anybody on this body is a Satanist. I don't think anybody on this staff is a Satanist. I don't think anybody was thinking two months ago, hey, let's try to set it up so we can get rid of the prayer. I don't think that was a thought in anybody's mind. That's just my interpretation. I think it was another city screw-up, and now the response has been mishandled, and the Satanists win. That's not acceptable to me. So you can shout out, or you can get elected to the city council, and you can make your own comments up here. That's probably not likely to happen, though, is my guess. So I guess I would say this, I feel like we did everything we could in good faith to get a constitutional motion today, working with the city attorney and so forth, and now I'm hearing the very motion that we crafted with them, I don't know how it could have been understood that we wanted to go into effect immediately, talked about the emergency clause, it would have taken effect tomorrow. Now, since we talked a lot about the executive session, it's my understanding, we never wrote down in our rules or in law that we're going to do a prayer. So we could change the practice, which is exactly what my motion said. I was unaware of this on Friday. It's another thing that seems to have slipped through the cracks. I'm not the lawyer. I'm asking for advice, so I always want full and practical advice, and in this case, we don't need an emergency clause, correct? If the substitute motion failed and the motion I put forth passed, it would go into effect tomorrow, even if it was a five to four rather than a seven to two vote. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I don't think that's accurate, because your motion is to enact an ordinance, and an ordinate...
It's a practice. It says practice. I got that draft right here. We worked this out specifically, we worked this out specifically so that this motion would need five votes and would go into effect. Again, I'm not a lawyer. Perhaps there's a misinterpretation, but there were several of us who worked on it, so I'm not sure why there's not any clarity here. I guess I know how this is going to go, so maybe I'll just stop now, but it is extremely frustrating. I speak about this stuff, it seems like every meeting between the FAA and the checks in the dumpster and everything else, it's just unacceptable. You know, Matthew Whitaker was a nominee for a position down here, allegations of plagiarism. We hear that there's more, and we've been told, no, 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 it's not like that, that's not the way it is. And it turned out, it was exactly the way it is. I just, I cannot believe I'm having this conversation again. We hear that there's more and we've been told, no, 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 it's not like that, that's not the way it is. And it turned out it was exactly the way it is. I just, I cannot believe I'm having this conversation again. It's like Groundhog Day for me, which I will just stop there by saying, that's an excellent movie, by the way. If you haven't seen it, Bill Murray, very funny. But, but beyond that, I just, before I say something intemperate, I guess I'll just be quiet. Thank you.
At least in my opinion, the core, the core issue is if we, if, if this council decides to continue to allow invocation, but we do so in a way that stops the applicant who was scheduled to go on the 17th, we are in significant constitutional peril.
If this council decides to support the substitute motion and then there is a vote later on and the invocation comes back before this city council, it will always have to be done, meeting the constitutional requirements, means we can't do so in a way that discriminates against minority faith. If we do so, then we will put ourselves in constitutional peril in a situation where we will inevitably lose before the court. So that doesn't change, the constitutional framework in which we're making this decision doesn't change regardless of whether we do that or not. It's just, we all need to move forward with eyes wide open as it, as it relates to that. Are there other comments by members of this?
Mayor, I just, just to follow.
Councilman Noakowski, yes, please, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm reading this, and I'm not an attorney, but this decision right here, it talks about how the council, back in the town of Greece in New York City, that they actually had one Protestant minister saying the prayer for every single council meeting and that they didn't have the right to, to monitor his content, but they had the right to choose one minister for every single council meeting. So I'm not sure where I'm getting this advice from our legal counsel, saying that we cannot choose ministers or individuals that are active in our community, that give back to our community, that serve the homeless and, and childrens and, and that they can't, that we can't choose those individuals if, according to the Supreme Court, it states that. I'm getting mixed messages. The other thing is that they said that if we would put practice and, and take out the emergency clause, that we wouldn't have a problem with a three-quarter vote, that it would just take five individuals from this council to not end prayer in the City of Phoenix.
You heard it too, wasn't it, just now? Oh, well, our, our city attorney has given us the advice, obviously every council member can accept or reject that advice as, as that's their choice as, as elected officials, but the request is that the city attorney give the best advice that he can under, under the circumstances. Councilman Waring?
I guess just my, I have issues with the Satanists, you know, and them speaking. I, I don't think that's the message you want to send on behalf of the City of Phoenix. But take that out of it. I just felt like we made an extremely good faith effort to try to get this right. Wouldn't have proceeded if I thought in some way we were, I was aware of all the issues that you're talking about were possible, but this is why we asked for legal advice and why we thought this had been fully vetted. I read the comments in the paper that had seemed to completely support that. So I was, I guess blissfully unaware that this was going to, this ground, this legal ground was going to change. I would also say our legal advisor is not the only, he is not the only font of information on this. He is not the ultimate decider. He would not be the judge in our case. Now, we have already, again, on the false premise that my thing is somehow going to pass, I recognize that it sounds like it's not. But if it did, we've already given away the case. I, I don't know why we did it quite this way, but, but, okay, but, but I have an issue that goes beyond just this particular item. I have an issue with the way this is handled and I think my frustration is probably bleeding through in my comments and I think rightfully so. And I think there are a lot of people that are confident in the city getting it right out there, who are watching at home or here in the audience, and it's just very frustrating. I feel like the city let them down again. And I, I, you know, this, is this, this affects more people than us resealing the cracks that already been sealed, sealed a couple of months ago. But if you start adding up these things over and over again, it's just, it's hard to have a lot of confidence in what I'm hearing. I've talked about this at these meetings before. It's very, very frustrating.
All right, excellent. I'll turn to any other members of the council. Councilman Gago, do you have a short statement to make in advance of a vote? We'll see if the substitute motion passes. Councilman Gago.
Wonderful. Thank you to everyone who has been involved with this process. We appreciate your dedication to a stronger city, including those of you who don't live in Phoenix but believe the decision we're making is important to a broader group of people. We really appreciate your interest. These are important issues. They are not easy. Councilman Waring has been working very hard to find a solution and many others of us have been looking for solutions. I've spoken to several constitutional attorneys about what our options were and what they told me is that one of the mistakes we made was a mistake by elected officials, that once an elected official said that his intent was to prevent a group from having the right to pray, that that dramatically changed our legal case, that that set up a decision where we would either have to give wheelbarrows of cash to the satanic temple or we would have to make a change, that we dramatically hurt our legal case by saying that our intention was to deny one group the right to pray. So we, as elected officials, have to take responsibility for our words, which weaken our legal case and put taxpayer money at risk. We are stewards of taxpayer money and we need to be responsible as well.
All right, thank you very much. I'm just going to say that I'll be supporting the substitute motion and I want to say, you know, this is, the way this issue has been handled, not by the public, I respect every single person in the public, many of us spoke very passionately about their own faith, their own belief in the good Lord and how that they feel it affects their recommendations as council. I respect every member of this city council. I respect their own personal faith, their own personal belief systems, and I know that that is important to them as they serve on this body and as they make important decisions affecting the people of the City of, of Phoenix. And I approach this issue, as I do all issues before this body, as a person of faith. I don't personally talk about it a lot. I don't broadcast it a lot, but I'm a Christian. I'm Catholic. Was raised in a household by parents who lived their faith in both words and deeds. My faith has brought me peace during troubled times and gratitude during good times. Just a few weeks ago, I put my hand on the Bible during my inauguration and at the same time I raised my right hand and swore to uphold the United States Constitution. Not even two years ago, the justices on the Supreme Court, including conservative justices Roberts and Alito, stated clearly what the Constitution demands of cities like ours, that when it comes to prayer, we can't discriminate against minority or unpopular faith. Discriminating against faith would violate the oath that all of us on this diocese took. And I personally take that very, very seriously. My faith gives me strength. Personally, thanks to my faith, I'm certainly strong enough to withstand a two-minute invocation from a group whose agenda or message doesn't reflect my own faith. You know, this council didn't ask for this controversy. Nobody on this council, quote, pushed, unquote. It, as one of my colleagues has repeatedly and incorrectly asserted, this issue was brought to us. I understand the sensitivity of this issue. I get it. I know that this is deeply personal for so many people, not only in this room, but throughout the City of Phoenix. And I respect those who have been respectful during this debate and have acted like adults. But we've also seen some pretty vicious and unfair political attacks over the last week. Really, really unfair and unfortunate attacks by members of this own body. Now, my faith teaches me to turn the other cheek, but I am deeply, deeply disappointed that one member of this council has sought to demagogue his colleagues on this city council. I find it very sad that a member of this council is so small and desperate to score political points that he openly questions the faith of his colleagues by repeatedly suggesting that members of this body were pushing, unquote, satanic prayer. Frankly, it's the most despicable thing that I have ever witnessed in my service to the city. This has gone over the line. So now, the original motion was asking the council to knowingly betray our oath of office and it would no doubt open the city to litigation that we would inevitably lose and have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, to the litigants on the other side. I don't think that is what leadership calls us to do under these circumstances. The First Amendment to the Constitution is not ambiguous on this issue. So given the facts of this case, the very difficult facts of this case, I think the right course of action is what the, the motion made by Councilwoman Thelma Williams and I will be supporting the substitute motion. On the alternative, members of the council, if any comments? I am actually going to be phoning in for the remainder of the meeting because I coach my son's basketball team and the game starts soon, so I'll be listening in and doing the vote via phone and I don't want to be late for that game. I owe it to my son. Councilman Waring?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't question anybody's motives and how you're voting on this, so, or your face or anything else, as I, I think I said clearly before. But I will say I'm going to be voting against the motion because I, I just cannot bring myself to, ironically, it will produce the effect, I guess, I guess I'm confused, so it produces the effect of the Satanists will not be speaking at the February 17th meeting. Supposedly that's a huge issue, us doing that, so, but apparently that's okay. I, I still haven't totally reconciled why that's the case. I think that's been lost. I, again, asked at the beginning of this procedure or this hearing, that that be announced. Apparently it wasn't because reporters have been asking me, what is the effect of this? And have been surprised at the result, but I am correct, right? They will not be speaking on the 17th if the current motion, not mine, the other motion on the floor, is, is passed.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, that's correct.
So, so I'm correcting that. I do think probably a lot of people left not, not realizing that. So that's, I guess for my nefarious purposes, that's good, but I don't want to be the party to doing away with the prayer, but, but I understand it's a tough vote for a lot of people. It's frankly not a particularly tough one for me, but, but I understand, you know, a lot of people, big room and so forth, I've been there many times myself on the opposite side, so I understand. I will take one exceptional, take exception to a little bit of what the mayor said, just one sentence about the knowingly. Certainly I am not knowingly trying to violate the Constitution. I made, mentioned every good faith effort to speak with our attorneys and craft something that met constitutional muster. I'm surprised to hear now that it doesn't. I, something got lost in translation again. I thought we had worked it and worked it and I thought we were good, but apparently it wasn't. But I thought I did my best to make sure that, that we were okay. It wasn't until I talked to Ed Zirker about this on, I think it was Monday, before I did an interview with ABC, that there were even any hints that there was a problem. I had, reading the paper and having had the, the back and forth on this, I had no reason to believe there would be. So that was news to me. So, and we didn't have our executive session until yesterday. So I will just say that I had not knowingly tried to do anything other than represent the views of not every, but my constituents as I see fit and we have elections to sort that out in the future. So that's it, thank you.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Waring, I think we want to clarify a question that Mr. Waring asked previously about the motion that we've seen. So I think the city attorney will clarify that, the motion, which was different from the ordinance title that was read.
Yes.
You asked the question as to whether.
Well, I mean, Dan Bratton worked on this in the city attorney's office.
You asked the question as to whether your motion, or the, I'm sorry, whatever motion was made, needed an emergency clause. Mr. Holm?
And Vice Mayor, Councilman Waring, I apologize. I thought that the original motion was the matter that was noticed on the agenda, which would call for the adoption of an ordinance. In point of fact, now that I look at your motion as drafted, it was to change the practice and not to amend the city council rules, which would require an ordinance amendment to the code. And so I understand now where you were going and I apologize, I misunderstood.
So we did need five votes. It's all right, it's just, we did work with someone in your office who was available. And again, I, I think this is more communication. I am not saying in any way, anybody was trying to screw this deal up and so forth. I just, it's just, I got to feel like I'm getting the level best advice and so forth. And I don't, I can't say resent, but, but I do think saying I'm knowingly doing something is false under the circumstances. I made every possible, we spent hours on this thing. My staff spent hours, other staffers, Councilman Noakowski was like, I thought it was five votes, too. I think Councilman DeCicchio's not in it. We all thought it was, how could we all be that wrong? So it sounds like there was some confusion. I would have thought Dan would have mentioned it to you, Dan, again, from your, your office, but apparently that didn't happen going forward. Hopefully we'll do better.
Thank, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams, uh, Pastor, I'm sorry.
The motion, is it an ordinance or is it a practice?
What motion are you speaking?
The first one.
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I thought it was the ordinance, but as I see it in writing now from Councilman Waring, it's to change the practice. So it's not an ordinance.
Okay. So in changing the practice, will the February 17th still be in effect? Will they still be able to pray?
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, if you change the practice and make it retroactive and cancel the prayer, we will get sued. If you change the practice and make it prospective and allowed her to pray on the 17th, we won't get sued and then the new practice would be in effect for future schedules.
Got it. Okay. I need to.
All right, Mayor. Councilman, Councilman DeCicchio?
I need to respond back to that because what you heard was a lot of nice words, but the actions don't follow the words, follow the actions. Think about this, you have a city attorney who literally has been changing his opinion as he's been sitting up here to be able to accommodate whatever it is, the position that he's trying to push here, which is to ban the prayer. When was the first time you heard about the prayer ban? When? This was the first time it was ever presented. It was done behind closed doors. I'm telling you, that's how these things work here at the City of Phoenix. People up here can get upset, they can complain, they can do all those things, but the bottom line is, that is the MO of the City of Phoenix. You have a city attorney who rigged the presentation today. You have a, a, a motion that was put out that nobody had the opportunity really to debate until you came over here, didn't hear it out there, did you? And you have a major change that's occurring here at the City of Phoenix. Major change. This is a significant change here, tradition that's been going on at the City of Phoenix, haphazardly, like, well, I guess we're just going to have to do this. There are other things that could have been done. We had to sit down and, and let the city attorney have different ideas. I'll give you a present, I, I asked him about a chaplain. I said, well, what if we had a, a chaplain from the fire department or police department? He goes, well, if you bring in a Phoenix fire, a Phoenix, one from the police department, a chaplain in there, you will have this problem. Because they didn't go through a process. Well, then tell me the process. That's what an attorney is supposed to do. They're supposed to give you the idea, but what happened from day one is this city attorney has literally been setting this in place. They created the problem. They created the problem here.
Vice Mayor, I just have to say, as the manager.
Well, Ed, I'm not done talking. I'm sorry, Ed.
The city attorney did not ring this.
I'm not done talking and when I'm done talking, you can interrupt me. You're not allowed to interrupt, okay? So the bottom line is you have to be polite, too, Ed, because the bottom line, you and I had this conversation.
Councilmen, we should all be polite. We should all be polite.
No, you, you and I had this conversation today about the city attorney and how bad he is and what he is doing to this city. He's literally creating a situation here where we're having a problem. You and I had that conversation this morning. And I asked you, I said, try to make it more fair so that those of us that are in the minority here have an opportunity to have fairness when it comes to legal. So the bottom line is this, is that this is what you're starting to see here at the City of Phoenix. You're starting to see the problems come up. It's not just this, it's other things, too. The Sheraton, the water rate increase that you were lied to, the fact that the City of Phoenix told the public publicly, and this is what Councilman Waring was talking about, told them that we didn't know anything that was going on with these flight changes, major changes that had a major impact at, at the, at, for a lot of people's homes, like thousands of homes, right? Well, it turns out, city staff said, well, we sort of know, well, we did know about it. We were sitting in the room. This is the kind of stuff that's going on. So the only way to fix this is for literally the public to start taking this into your own hands. We're going to take this forward, we're going to get this thing scheduled. If they don't do that, the politicians here at the city decide not to do this, then we've already got the commitment from the, the religious community to move this prayer forward because it's, it's even the secular individuals want to see this. I can't even tell you, people that have come up to me and said, Sal, we think this is a good idea. Why would you want to take the prayer away? That's what you're having today, it's a ban on prayer. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Gates, are you still with us on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate everybody's time that it may have taken today to speak from the heart on this issue and I would agree with some of the comments that have made, have been made earlier here. I don't believe anyone on this council is trying to push a Satanist's prayer. I believe that everyone is trying to do their level best to follow the law, a person by person. I personally disagree, I have respect for Mr. Holm, you know, I personally take a little different view of the legal issues here and so that's why I'll be voting no on this substitute motion.
Thank you, Councilman Gates. Councilwoman Pastor?
As you can tell, this has obviously been very emotional for all of us. And when my colleagues attack us and my faith, that's. And when my colleagues attack us and my faith, that's very personal. For me, a Catholic girl understands and gets it. But when people tell me and I hear that I'm selling my soul, that's wrong because I'm not selling my soul. Because today, God is standing with me, and He has been with me throughout my life, and He has me in this leadership role to make a decision. And doing that, we have gotten advice, and we have gone round and round about what's best for our city. And people need to understand that. People need to understand the whole picture of how we got here and how this has been going round and round for many different reasons. I do believe that my colleagues on Friday were trying to come to a solution. It was in good faith to get there and had good intentions. But legally, what I am hearing is that on February 17th, she will be allowed to pray. And I... That's what I understand. And so that is one of the dynamics that we have to understand. And I have heard from all of you to not allow her to pray. And then I've heard from all of you to allow her to pray. I am going to make the best decision that I need to make for this city. And God will be with me, and He will be walking with me on this journey.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This is, Councilwoman Williams?
Vice Mayor, I have a comment.
Councilman Alkowsky?
And you know, I hear Councilmember Pastor, and I agree with you. I'm confused because I'm hearing advice from our city attorney telling us one thing, and then we're getting Supreme Court decisions saying totally opposite. Right now, we were told that the first motion on the table would take a three-quarter vote, and it won't take a three-quarter vote, it takes five votes. The other thing we heard is also that it wouldn't stop the prayer from the 17th on, which it will, because we're changing the procedure. So that's where the confusion is. We're getting bad advice. So what my primary concern with all this is that we're voting on a moment of silence and this, what's on the table right now. And what this is going to happen is that there's no other compromise. That's it. We're ending prayer. And to me, that's wrong. We're getting... I mean, I don't want... I don't think we should share any... I want to make sure that we respect everybody's rights. I want to make sure that we're getting legal advice from the citizens from the Supreme Court so that we can make the right decisions here and that we don't put each other against... fighting against each other here. And what I'm hearing from people is that we shouldn't allow somebody from the outside, somebody from Tucson, to create all this chaos within the city of Phoenix. What I heard from individuals here is that we should have individuals praying for the city of Phoenix that serves the city of Phoenix, that helps the city of Phoenix, that provides services to the city of Phoenix, and that we, as council members, that were elected to represent our districts, that we should choose individuals that serve our community, that are servant leaders, that do good. And when I hear testimonies of hate groups, and I didn't know about all this, and this concerns me, that we will allow a hate group to come in here that talks against gays, Jews, and women, a hate group that talks about that they don't care what happened in 9/11, that created a book about rape. How can we allow an individual to do an advocate... to do a prayer over the city of Phoenix and guide us with all this hatred? I don't think it's about canceling the meeting. It's about us having a procedure. It's about us doing the right decision. It's about us not allowing people from the outside with a hidden agenda to end prayer to come in here and push their political views in prayer. So what I'm asking my colleagues to do is that, according to what the Supreme Court says here, we are allowed, as elected officials, to choose individuals from our city, from our residents, from our city, that serves our city and does good to our city, to do these prayers over our city. And that's what I'm asking my colleagues, is not to end prayer, because a moment of silence will end prayer. A moment of silence will stop prayer, and the generations to come will be affected from it.
All right. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you.
I'm not finished yet, Vice Mayor. I support the First Amendment and the freedom of speech of individuals. I believe that we have an opportunity for individuals to have comments at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of our meeting. I believe that when we ask for prayer, we're asking for a higher being to come in here and to guide us and to help us make these hard decisions that we have to do. And it's not a political agenda during that prayer. It's asking for advice and guidance. And I believe that that's what we're asking for here, folks. And this moment of silence won't provide that. I had the opportunity to go to the school, and at the schools, before class starts, they have this about 15-second of silence, a moment of silence. I asked the children before I gave my speech, "What's a moment of silence to you?" "Oh, it's a way for us to calm down before school starts." So they lost the whole focus. Children don't really understand what a moment of silence is. And I'm afraid that in the future, before every council meeting, that will happen. So my other concern is that with this, would this ban prayer from all of our city facilities? I'm asking our attorney here, would that in the near future?
I believe the question is, if the motion on the table, if it passes, will it ban prayer in city facilities? Vice Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, prayer on public facilities is governed by other rules, not rules that relate to prayers in public meetings sponsored by the public body, such as the city council. And so all those rules stay in place. There are times when our facilities are actually rented out to churches to conduct their own meetings, and so of course, of course, prayer occurs there. There are times when people, there's an employee organization of Employees for Christ who have, they don't meet on our facilities, but when they, when they're involved in their own activities, they also pray. And so all of those prayers could continue. We're just talking about the practice before the city council.
Thank you.
Another question is, when we have our own meetings out in the community or within our own facilities, would we still be able to start our meetings or lead our meetings with a prayer?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, what was the context again? I'm sorry.
Well, basically, if this motion passes, a silent, a moment of silence, can we actually have prayer at our district meetings, our block watch meetings that are actually in our city facilities? Or, once a month, I actually gather 50 to 80 pastors within my district to actually come down to the city of Phoenix and to pray for my colleagues and the city of Phoenix and all of our employees. Would that ban that in the near future?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the two motions only apply to this meeting and only the practice of this meeting and this meeting only.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I am also very upset with our councilman the other end. I really, really work hard to do the very best I can at this job. I've always felt like God puts you where you need to be to do this. And somehow, I have no idea, I never dreamed I'd be in politics, and I ended up here. And I try to do what I think's best for the neighborhood, for the city, for everybody here and for all the employees. I truly, truly resent hearing what I have put a lot of effort in is rigging something when that's not true. I have always been very open. If you get my newsletter, you will see all the information that comes across my desk. But I will tell you, on this issue, I was in exactly the same meeting as Councilman DeCecio and the other members, heard exactly the same thing, had the same discussion, didn't hear anything else till I read Saturday's paper. Did not know what was totally proposed until we come back this week and heard. I haven't had any secret meetings. I have been very concerned because since all this started, I've now had emails, phone calls, pass it and I'll kill you. Oh, by the way, did you know that you have a satanic group in your district? Oh, did you hear about the one with spaghetti that actually has, wears a metal strainer? I hear they want to come. I want to protect this city. I want to do the right thing. I believe that if we don't change what we're doing, we will get sued. And I don't think that the city needs to spend $500,000 when we need to increase so many other things in the city. We need to improve streets, we need to have more police officers and whatever, when we know we would probably not win. Because as our lawyer has repeatedly told us for a week, what the law is, what the constitutional consequences are, and what the decisions that have been made. So I am very defensive of this council. We may not always all agree, and we usually don't. But I really resent when it gets personal and I get accused of either creating a scam on water rates or trying to rig this because that is not true. And I have always had great faith in God and been very involved in my church, whether it was raising my kids, teaching Sunday School, raising my grandsons. It has always been part of my life, and I really, really think you need to be careful what you're saying because you're doing not only personal damage, but I think it's very poor to show this community that we don't respect each other and that we're not working as, in tandem for the best. We may not agree, but I think we all have a desire to do what's best for this community, and that's not demonstrating it. I would like to call for the question very quickly.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I will, I have not had an opportunity to speak, so I'll speak, and hopefully, we can go to the roll call vote. This conversation, though incredibly important and passionate, has not made our community safer. It has not grown our economy. It has not made our schools stronger. It's not made our water cleaner. The invocation prior to formal council meetings has become a controversial issue as of late. And while some wish a separate church and state, others wish to ban a certain viewpoint that, for the record, I too find repulsive. I will support the motion to begin each formal city council meeting with a moment of silent prayer and reflection. This protects the constitutional rights of all and allows people to individually pray to whomever they choose and reflect freely, peacefully, and without fear. As a man of faith, I personally will choose to pray. And I hope we can end this polarizing debate that is designed to divide us and not bring us together and refocus our efforts on the challenges and opportunities that our city faces.